I'll remember that for the future.
I did get one today, though.
Yeah. I sent it to you.
I read it.
Well, then you do. Oh, you don't answer them?
I don't answer them.
Good to go, Kristen?
I'm not totally technically ignorant.
Bruce looks like he's, um...
Ms., um, Joan, have you started the machine? Okay, just start getting yourself ready. Warm up the engine.
All right, we're ready to go, guys. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's June 6th, 2012, approximately 7:00 PM, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee. We will begin with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Rabinovich.
Well, if I could find my... See if Michelle worked that in for me.
I did not.
You did not? Um, well, I can probably talk for the majority of the staff that since, um, there are after today only seven days left, the students and the staff probably think that that is good news. There are a lot of field days, field trips, and other activities going on in this post-MCAS time of year. And, um, but I don't have any specific good news except for the fine job that the chair did this morning on the Gumbo Show.
Thank you. Cliff, good news?
Yeah, it's, um, there's good news. It's kind of hard to find good news, given the headlines of last week, but, uh, you know, I think that, uh, we had a really, really unbelievable awards night, senior awards night. We gave, uh, the community gave in excess of $220,000 in local scholarships. That certainly is good news. Uh, I took a good, hard look at some of the colleges that our kids are going to, and despite our fiscal problems, we're still placing kids in very, very good schools. Um, eighty, I think it's eighty-six or eighty-seven percent of our kids are going on to post-secondary education. So, um, I think all of that, um, says volumes about the job that our teachers are doing under very, very trying conditions. So, I just thought that that would be good news that I'd like to share.
Rhonda?
Just to congratulate the students from the Wareham Cooperative, as well as Wareham High School, for, uh, graduating, and, you know, only wishing them the best in what their lives have laid out for them.
Yes, I concur. Without diminishing any prior speeches by our valedictorians and salutatorians, I thought the two that, uh, that were there, this particular graduation, did an outstanding job in, uh, not only in being thoughtful, but at appropriate times being humorous. And I think that they did an extremely good job. Uh, I, I will say that I noticed that the scholarships were down slightly from a year ago. A year ago, it was about 240,000. Not that 220-some-odd-thousand dollars isn't, isn't fantastic, and it, uh, it makes other communities look, look like paupers, which is fantastic. But the reason we're down is not because of a lack of commitment from, from some people. What I was told was literally some, some, um, major givers, because of the financial situation in the stock market and interest rates and things like that, these endowed scholarships had to be that much more conservative about the numbers of scholarships they were giving. But the actual commitment of these, of these organizations is still very high. So, I think we should be very thankful and also very proud that they see, uh, this community as a good place to invest. Okay, minutes of the meeting of May 23rd.
The movie accept as presented?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, three, zero, zero.
Would it be appropriate to say at this particular time how thorough a job that our secretary does on these minutes?
No.
I, I, you know, sometimes she, uh, she goes unnoticed, but, uh, this was particularly a tough meeting, and it was a long meeting, and, and I think she should be complimented on the fine job that she did.
I agree. Uh, school committee reports. Do we have any reports from any of the members that are here tonight?
We have a meeting scheduled for next week on Tuesday, the 12th, for our first meeting for the technology and curriculum, uh, advisory committee.
Good. That's a rather important committee. Which day did you say it was going to be again?
The 12th.
The 12th, okay.
Who's on that committee?
4:45.
Um, you and, uh, Mrs. Viewman are on that committee.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I didn't know that we're having a meeting.
I'm glad you asked.
Yes, I am too.
There was a meeting of the superintendent's budget advisory committee. Both Ken Fons and I attended. Uh, it was... It was a difficult, uncomfortable meeting because it was the final process by which we made all the cuts necessary to get to a balanced budget with the assumption that the override and debt exclusions, uh, will not pass. It's a process we had to go through. Uh, it had integrity. It made sense. It had ramifications for, um, significant ramifications for both the elementary schools and the high school. And, um, I think we've talked about those ramifications significantly over the last several months, so I won't go into the details, but suffice it to say, almost two dozen teachers were, um, were given their notice, and I sincerely hope that we will be in a position by the end of July to be able to rehire them, assuming they are still available, which is the key issue. And the end of July is the key issue as well, because the longer we go before we can offer them positions back, the less likely they are to be available for obvious reasons. To remind everybody, Tuesday, uh, June 12th, uh, the Board of Selectmen will be holding a meeting. The school committee is on the agenda. We expect to get started about 7:30, according to the chairman. It will be a posted meeting. Welcome, Mike. Uh, it will be a posted meeting of the school committee, so we hope all of our members can attend. I will be making an opening statement. Dr. Rabinovich will be making a short presentation, and then we will be urging the Board of Selectmen to deliberate and vote on the, uh, on the creation of a special ballot and a special election as soon as possible. If, if that all takes place, there is a mandated 35-day period after which the special election can take place. So, that's why we're thinking, uh, best case, it's towards the end of July before we might be able to rehire, assuming the good citizens of, uh, of this town see the wisdom in approving the override. The debt exclusions are obviously not, don't directly impact, um, the hiring of teachers, but they have a significant impact on multiple areas of the school.
And the town.
And the town, yes. Technology and textbooks, um, the gymnasium roof, uh, the school buses, and of course, the feasibility study for, for Minnet Forest School, which would allow us, uh, to continue along the track of renovating and refurbishing and replacing many aspects of that school so that we can be as proud of Minnet Forest as we are of this school, and of course, the high school, which still looks really good after many years of service. So, once again, that's, uh, 7 o'clock, Tuesday, June 12th, on the top floor of the multi-service center. With that, I'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, if I can just...
Could I go back to that for a second?
Sure.
What is the location of that meeting?
Uh, top floor of the multi-service center.
They will be in their room?
Yes.
That is at the current time. However, if there are too many people that want to attend, they will have to move. Um, I have asked Mr. Foster to explore, um, also setting up the auditorium at Town Hall, um, as a secondary location. But, you know, we'll have to see how many people show up at that meeting.
And I have, and I have offered Chairman Holmes the opportunity to, to meet with, uh, with him and with Dr. Rabinovich and, and Mr. Foster so that we could make sure there aren't any surprises at that meeting, including the number of people who might attend. To date, that hasn't happened, but we've been open and forthcoming about the fact that we expect a lot of interest on the part of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is a follow-up, really, of Jeff's report. Um, yes, yesterday, Anna and I met with, um, John Foster, the acting T.A., and Derek, and went through our numbers with them, talked about, again, um, the effect that this is having on the school system, and that according to my calculation, um, that I call the... There's a company that represents the town when it comes to unemployment claims. It's called UTMC, and according to that company, um, teachers are able to collect once they've gotten a pink slip right after the close of school. So, school closes on June 15th. They can go down the next Monday and file, and two weeks later, start receiving compensation for the million, $200,000 of salary that has been cut. The unemployment, um, cost is approximately $9,000 per week. So, every week we delay having the election costs the town an additional $9,000. There are 23 people who currently have positions that will not have positions next year, if this does not happen, if the election does not occur. And, um...
If the election not only occurs, prevails.
Prevails. But the first step is making sure that the electorate has the opportunity to speak and to vote.
I guess one other thing I should add, and that is, there was the perception among some members of the Board of Selectmen that we could, uh, put off the special election until September 15th, when the primary election is scheduled to take place. We were informed by another member of the Board of Selectmen, who happens to be an attorney and specializes in administrative law, that the law does not allow ballot questions to be added to a primary election. I asked, um, this, uh, member to make sure he communicated that to other members of the board so that that would not be considered a viable option, because it's literally precluded by law. So, there is no choice but to either do it, uh, this summer or essentially it becomes moot, because we'd be well into the school year, um, if we waited until November. So, I don't consider that to be a viable possibility if we're, if we're serious about, um, trying to rehire some teachers and, uh, continue with the progress we're making in the educational programs of the, of the district. I think we're finally finished that issue?
Um, yes. I was just going to add that, um, all of the debt exclusions, there are four debt exclusions. One for school buses, for $360,000. One for the high school roof, for $110,000. Instructional material for $341,000, and the Minnet Forest feasibility study for $575,000, which we will receive 60% back at least from the state. All of that together is 7.68 cents per thousand on your evaluation of your home. So, that on a house that has a valuation of $100,000, it will cost you $7.68 per year for five years for all of the debt exclusions to make that investment in education in the town. And the debt exclusion, which is for 780,000...
The override, you mean?
The override, thank you. Um, we said was $23 for a $100,000 home evaluation, because it's 23 cents per thousand dollars valuation.
And to be clear, these are not school committee numbers. These are assessor and tax collector numbers. So, we, we trust that they truly represent the actual burden associated with this, um, these debt exclusion and override articles.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just need to say one other thing, which is, you know, in, in addition to the cost for unemployment cost to the town, the other thing to, uh, look at when we're talking about delaying a vote is that you have some very, very good teachers and administrators that, um, have been laid off, and I know that, um, or have gotten their papers, and I know that if it was me, I would not be waiting until September, August, even tomorrow, to start looking for a job. We know that surrounding towns, um, have done, you know, this difficult work and have raised taxes, and they are not laying off teachers. They're actually hiring. So, I just saw that there are, um, you know, three or four positions in Plymouth. There's, you know, if, I've, I've been looking, and the positions are out there. So, every single day, we delay this. We are talking about very good teachers that have committed themselves to Wareham, that we have told, "Thanks, but we just can't afford you." Um, we're losing them to other districts, and that is a huge disservice to our kids. So, again, we can, we just can't delay this any longer.
Unfortunately, it's worse than that, because we also have parents making decisions about children.
Yeah.
And, um, there is both a financial cost and a cultural cost associated with losing children who want to remain in the school system, but parents being, hearing a message and seeing a message that the community isn't willing to invest in the schools. And they're both a terrible situation. So, I agree with you, but I think we also can't discount the fact that, um, there are options for parents. Mike, did you want to say something?
Uh, I had some questions for Dr. Rabinovich.
Sure.
Yeah, if I heard you right, you said the day after the school ends, the school year ends, June 16th?
June 15th.
June 15th. Uh, they can, the teachers can immediately start collecting.
They can go down and file, and I believe it takes two weeks before they begin to collect.
And, and if they didn't, regardless, you, you mentioned, I think, at the last meeting, they get five che- checks on the last day of the school year?
Yes, but the way the, um, unemployment looks at it is teachers are paid for 182 or 183 days that they work. Those five checks are set aside fr- from their 10 months that they get at the end to help them budget through the summer.
That's a deferred payment.
Okay.
They didn't get their full pay during the year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's...
Okay. Your report, sir.
Oh, that was my report. That I would just wanted to reiterate where we were at.
Then we have, um, two, two school improvement plans for this evening. The first one will be Minnet Forest, and, uh, this Joan Siemens is here, and we're glad to have you here, and I know you have some people who you'd like to introduce.
And we're ahead of schedule.
We're ahead of schedule.
You just jinxed us.
Yeah, please don't do that.
Keep you on schedule, don't worry.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Welcome, Principal Siemens.
Thank you. Uh, yes, I'm here to present the East Wareham, the Hammond, and the Minnet Forest School Improvement Plan. This slide thanks all of my school council members who have worked with me throughout the year. But I also would like to thank Jerry Young, Ian Cody, Denise Tobin, and Jamie Pelletier, who were able to come this evening. I know everybody has busy schedules and sports and everything, so I appreciate their support. Um, there's a chair right here next to me if anyone wants to, you know...
Come on down.
They seem really comfortable where they are, right there. So, I have some slides. I'm not going to go through everything on these slides. I'm going to highlight some things for you. Um, we're just proud of some initiatives that we've been able to do at Minnet Forest, at Hammond, and at East, uh, this year, as you are aware, and most of the, um, community members are aware from various meetings that we've held. We were able to have two part-time meeting interventionist positions added to Minnet Forest, and that was because we started the Response to Intervention Program, RTI. Um, we began that training. By the end of June, we'll have all teachers K to 5 trained. Um, most of the staff have been trained. We just have to finish grades five, um, in, at the end of, uh, June. We established common planning time for staff, if they wanted to take advantage of that for collaboration. So, all teachers in grade two have the same block of time off. Their children go to specials. Um, so, we were able to do that for them. If you drive by the East Wareham School, you'll see that we have, um, a piece of playground equipment that's been installed, so we're proud of that. We're waiting for the, the ground to dry out, so we can have the bike pack put in. And then with a lot of volunteers, we're going to be spreading some mulch. So, uh, we thought we had it ready to go last Sunday, but we're not there yet. So, we'll be excited when that is finally completed. And I know it comes up later in my plan, but I'm very grateful to the anonymous donor that gave us the money that was able to fund that purchase. And then we had a science fair this year at Minnet Forest Imaginary Expo, and we appreciate the fact that the funding came from the Foundation for Wareham Education. Um, at the East Wareham School, they went through the NIAC accreditation process. It's a very long, intensive process, and happy to say that they received accreditation. Um, the Village PTA works with us on incentive programs for reading and math. We had our Blasante Books Program, our Math Wonders Program. Students get awards at the end of the year. We had that last week. Um, great program to help with student achievement. We were successful in our application for the renovation expansion project at Minnet from the MSBA. The articles were passed at town meeting, which just approves the funding in the event the debt exclusion goes through. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. We added a character education program this year at Minnet, where every month, we have Award of the Month. It's posted in the newsletter, and as students are caught doing these certain things, um, honesty being helpful, we post their name on the board. So, it's another way of, of trying to instill the positiveness in, in our children. And just about a month ago, six students at Minnet Forest won a bullying poster contest through the MACH program at Bridgewater State University. So, we're very proud of them for that. I just wanted to give you some highlights of the surveys that were done, that we sent out. We did have a better return rate this year. Um, I sent them out as hard copy instead of the technology that we did last year. So, for the parent surveys, 34% were returned this year, which is a higher number than we had last year. Um, I may make a, an adjustment next year and send it out one per family, 'cause I noticed, um, some comments were duplicated, and it came from the same household. So, I think just to be fair and accurate, we'll try to limit it to one per family. Um, so, just looking at the numbers, they really look good. We're in the, the eighties to the nineties, which is where I would hope to see, um, parents being satisfied with school safety and security, discipline, promotion and respect, and understanding of people with diverse backgrounds, school enjoyment, staff assisting, encouraging students to achieve their goal, the feeling of being valued and respected. And the only one that was really the highest number in the negative was the feeling that school rules and discipline are fair. There was 11% of parents felt, um, that was an area to strengthen, whereas the majority of the parents felt that it was not an issue. And when you see the range, 92 to 100%, that just depends on what particular school it was. So, I took the range of all three, separated it out this year.
Joan, just a, just a quick point, and I understand your feeling, but the flip side of it, if I had two children in my household, both going to your school, which I'm sure exists at, at times, they might have completely different experiences, and if you only give one per family, those completely different experiences would not be reflected. So, I can see your point, but I can also see that point. So, I, I wouldn't necessarily conclude that you, they shouldn't have the right to, to, um, return surveys that reflect the two different experiences.
So, there is a spot at the end of the survey for comments. So, that could be a, a place where a parent could write a comment on the, the different experiences. But if it's the same comment, and it didn't matter what grade the child was in, that's where I started to see some duplication.
I don't feel strongly about it. I just don't want parents to, to think that we think every child has the same experience.
Right. Right. That's, I think, a good place why we have a comment place.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I think that, um, the results that you were about to move on to, what I liked was that you did break it out by school. I think this is an important one to be able to see, um, for each school, so, um... So, if, if we can, I'd love to be able to get that data. And the only other question is, I see that it's kind of peppered in staff assisting, um, staff assisting and encouraging, no, uh, feeling of being valued and respected by all staff. But do you ask a question regarding parents who feel that they're a... Um, I've seen in some of the other surveys that they're being heard or that they feel that they have involvement in their child's education. You know, that kind of, that kind of question, instead of just feeling, uh, being valued and respected. Do you ever dive down in any of the surveys in the past and ask a question like that?
We've been using the same standard survey, and I know last year, the administrators got together, and we looked at the, the sentences that we had on it. Not to that degree, but it's certainly something we can look at next year when we're looking to add, to redo the questions or add questions. So, we could look at that. Um, and then in the school improvement plan, on page 15, I did break it out by school. I just didn't do it on the slide, so, um, I put, like, at Minnet, at Hammond, at East. So, you'll see there that's where, um, you'll get more detailed information.
Thanks.
Uh, the staff survey, 72% of the staff completed, uh, which was a great percentage higher than we had from last year. So, it is broken out here, school safety, the percentage of staff that is satisfied. We range from 63 to 75%. At Minnet Forest, 67% of the staff, um, are satisfied with discipline. School culture, we range from 53 up to 100% at East. Um, the area that we need to strengthen was that at Hammond, 75% of the staff or 100% of the staff at East are dissatisfied with discipline. When I looked through the comments for East, um, mainly it's some of the significant behaviors of some of our students coming in, who, because they're three years old, we really are just starting to work with them. So, we really need to teach them a lot about proper behavior. It could be their disabilities are lending to some aggressive behaviors, because they're not verbal. They don't know how to communicate otherwise. And the issue came up again that there wasn't a designated onsite administrator in that building. I know we've taken care of that for next year, but that's some of the reasons why we saw such a higher percentage. And it wasn't that they were completely dissatisfied. They just said it needed improvement. So, that pushed it into the negative, negative category.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So, Joan, and just to make sure I'm clear, so 47% of staff are dissatisfied with the school culture. Uh, I, I see 53% are satisfied, but that means almost half your staff at Minnet are dissatisfied with the school culture.
And a lot of times, the time of the year that you send out the survey has an impact on the percentage. So, as we're talking about a lot of the budget cuts, and, um, back in April, when we were talking about layoffs, that brings down morale, and that's where you start to see some of these numbers reflect what's going on in the building.
So, you're feeling that the 47% is reflective of, that when the survey was sent out, it was also when we were talking about having to lay off 22 teachers?
Right. That has had a huge impact towards the end of the school year.
Mr. Chair? Yes?
Uh, just to build on that, I, I think that, uh, I have to add my two cents on that only because I've spent a lifetime, uh, either in administration or in the classroom. And we've been beating up teachers pretty well. Uh, we've been beating them up pretty well. We've been asking them to do more with less consistently, and we've been doing it for years, to do more with less. Um, the general culture, or the lack of support, the lack of commitment, um, locally, and, and you could call it what you want, but the teacher's perception is there's a lack of commitment to support them in what they do. So, all of that lends itself into a, a culture that is, is less than happy, um, to say the least. So, I think that, um, yes, it may, it may, it may be indicative of some internal situations, but I think there are a lot of other external factors that play into that.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I think we've got to be real careful then to jump to conclusions and to leap to conclusions that may, may, may or may not be accurate. That's just my two cents.
We tried to do some after-school activities with the staff, just, you know, time away from school, just to be together, you know, put school aside and, and just share and be with each other, um, just to... with each other, just to try to build just some more morale when we do have tough times.
I, I can, I can certainly understand how layoffs can cause a morale issue. But I, I would hope that the word "culture" would go far beyond the issue.
That's not the only issue. You're right.
Right. Um, how do you think the teacher, the typical teacher understands what culture means in this question? What do you think they, how do they define culture when they're responding?
I think that they're looking at a variety of topics. They're looking at what, what's happening for professional development, what are we doing for in-service? We have the new teacher evaluation system that's coming down. There's a lot of new initiatives that they were taking on this year, the RTI. A lot of new things that, and they had time out of their classrooms because we had to provide the professional development. That all kind of goes into their school culture as well, what they feel as, um, what they're doing not only in their classroom, but how is it affecting their everyday life in the classroom and in that school? So it's kind of, they're looking at it globally. So there's a lot of factors that kind of go into this.
But I appreciate that, but I think this school committee and, and I believe you and Dr. Rabinovich would say that the changes that you're talking about, whether it's RTI, ILs, new curriculums, et cetera, are all, even parents have expressed that these are very positive and constructive changes. So I'm concerned that I'm inferring, and maybe I shouldn't, that your staff does not necessarily concur that these are constructive, positive changes.
No, I would disagree. They're positive changes, it's just take them out of the classroom for the training. And that, the teachers love to be there with their, with their children. So it, it kind of, they need the training to do what we need, but they're away from the children, and that's what, that's what they were seeing. There's a lot of initiatives that took them away.
All new things produce stress. Um, Jan and I have met with separate groups of teachers about the, you attended one of the sessions about the new evaluation system. There is a lot of distrust until they see it actually implemented. It's, what's being talked about, um, but that affects this. I would also say, and nobody has mentioned it, that there are things that are not within our control. There may be, um, particular disciplinary things that occur with certain children that have the rights to their education, that staff and or parents on occasion wonder, um, would be happier if that particular child wasn't in that school. That may not be politically correct to say, but it does affect the culture of a building. And there are times, just by the pendulum going up and down, that we have more of them in a particular year than other years because of some, um, health issues related to children. And I don't want to go much further than that because of identification. But there are things that, um, cause culture, and as Joan said, the timing of it, and having been a building principal for twelve years, I can tell you that the timing has a lot to do with how this particular question is answered. And, um, some people would like things to be done differently. It doesn't mean that they don't think that the changes are positive, but they are tired of change happening every year. Unfortunately, that is what we have to do because of the state and federal government. Curriculum is changing, materials are changing, evaluation is changing. So, um, I would hope, once things kind of reach a homostasis, that we would see the culture rise on this question.
Don't hold your breath on that.
I'm sorry that we're belaboring this point and taking a look at it, but when I take-
It's okay, 'cause I have a lot of wonderful comments, so it's not just that culture is, is low.
Right.
No, the culture's not low. It's perception of the culture that might be low.
To me, though, when I take a look at a forty, forty-seven percent dissatisfaction with the culture, and I think about culture, and I think about, um, even in the, um, in the job market, that you can put whatever percentage you want on it, but if the, if the employees, um, are, are not satisfied with the culture, that translates into their job and how they're doing their job. And so I take it one step further when I'm taking a look at that. If I'm having, if I don't feel that work, if I feel like they're constantly changing things on me, if I feel that there, I have no control, if I, all that kind of stuff, I'm sorry, it is going to translate into the way that I show up to work every single day and how I actually do my job. And so that's the reason why I have concern here. So there could be a million outside forces, but we still do have to do something about changing this number and, and, and increasing this number, because again, at the end of the day, it translates in how we're educating our children. And that's to me just unacceptable, that it's forty-seven percent are dissatisfied with the culture. Just an opinion.
Okay.
Continue, please.
Well, I, no, I, I just, I just think-
Or try to continue. Go ahead, Cliff.
No, no. I, I agree with everything the preceding speaker said, everything, you know, in terms of manifesting itself, it's a, it's a job performance. But, okay, the bottom line is, okay, you've got a workforce that every time we put something on their plate, we're not taking anything off. And now, don't tell me that that's not going to manifest itself over years, that we've been doing it. Now, am I saying that it, it may lead to, um, a, a lackadaisical approach to their job? In some cases, yes, but I haven't seen that to be the case globally. I've seen teachers that have risen above it consistently, year in and year out, face those obstacles, face those problems, face those new initiatives that we put on their plate, and, and dealt with it. So, and I think that the proof is in the pudding, you know, in terms of our test performances, even though, even though we're not where we should be, I haven't seen a huge dip either. So the point is, the more that we ask our people to do, whether it be teachers, custodians, administrators, the more we ask them to do with less, it's going to affect their attitudes towards their work. And I'm not saying that, I'm not going to make a giant leap in saying, well, they're going to be, they're going to be doing substandard work. I, I, I want to subscribe to that. But yes, in some cases, it may, you know, affect what they do. Because, you know, at some point in time, you get kicked in the head so long, you know, you, you ducking for cover before you even, uh, see it coming. So that's, that's number one point. The second point is those external factors that manifest themselves into the school. Those external factors. Now, I know for a fact that you had a, you had an administrator's coffee one morning and one person showed up. One parent showed up to, to the parent's coffee that morning. That manifested stuff into the school. You know, we can, we can point and we can say, well, what's wrong with the school culture? But I say, the school culture is a representation of the culture at large. And when we've got a school of seven hundred students and one parent shows up for an open coffee, that's indicative not only of the school culture, but the culture at large.
I think we could spend the rest of the evening-
Yes, we could. I'm sorry.
So all of these questions that we have, staff, parents, students, are able to list the positives and the negatives. And next year, one of my main things to do is to do a new vision statement for our schools. And when you do a new vision statement, you have to look at all this information and build that into the vision. So it is in my plan to do for next year. So, moving on. Uh, for students, the percentage of students, again, these are great numbers, the lowest one we see here, uh, Minnet, our school rules are fair. I would expect to see some students, they don't like to lose recess, they don't like detention, they don't like out-of-school suspension or in-school suspension, but we follow the discipline code. But still, eighty-nine percent is a, is a great number. The lowest ones, um, and this breaks my heart, I read almost every day. That's where we see our lowest percentage. Seventy-seven percent of students at Hammond said they read almost every day, seventy-nine percent at Minnet. I'd like to even get that up more. So in the student comment section, I just pulled out a couple. The students like math, phys ed, music, art, recess, science, and their teachers.
They like math?
Yes.
Interesting.
Um, some do not like homework, recess, and study skills, but they were very clear they liked the teacher, they just didn't like study skills. So they made that distinction. We have a great program, she does a lot of work on writing and informational texts and things like that, so, um, it's not phys ed that you can go out and run around and, and be active. So what I'm doing now is just going through some, reviewing the current goals that we did this year. So for student achievement, some of the activities that we did to meet, to reach this goal was the RTI training and implementation. We had student support programs, such as the CARE program that we ran this year. Um, SES is the tutoring that we're able to offer to students. We had common assessments that we gave to all grade levels, which was DIBELS. The grade and the GMA, the GMA was the math one. Uh, we had several staff from the summer to the, during the year that attended various DSAC math workshops, so they were able to carry that information over into their classroom. And then the instructional leaders, as well as the administrators, completed observation and walkthroughs. So we have the ways that we measured that progress. I'll keep going for now. Technology, we had the grade four that piloted the iPads, and we had a presentation a few weeks ago for my fourth graders. We held training for Rubicon Atlas for the teachers, um, also training for Pearson Inform. These are things that we'll be able to implement for next year. Power School Power Grade Training was held, so the teachers are using Power Grade to input their progress reports and their report guy grades. And Lexia and Study Island were a software that we were able to use with the students. And in addition, we used one, uh, for some students called Sumdog, and that's another one that we're looking at expanding for next year. For the community, um, we want to keep building the, our communication using Global Connect. Fortunately, I had to use it a couple of times this week, and we had to cancel Field Day because of the weather, um, but we have rescheduled them, which is great. That gives me a percentage of how many parents I'm able to reach every time I make a call. We u- use the local media, which we are appreciative of that. We had forty-three articles that appeared in newspapers this year. I always do my principal's monthly newsletter. I use the email for PTA and school council. We were able to see at Minnet Forest that sixty-five percent of parents have an email address in there. They don't always work, but it at least was starting to capture them, so we can work on that piece for next year. We want to keep building partnerships with our community. The Reading is Fundamental Week, having community readers come in to read to our students. And the Cape Cod Symphony Music in the morning program started at Hammond this year, and the students really enjoyed that. So I've already contacted Mrs. Ames and the representative to incorporate that next year.
Just to be clear, this is not the New Bedford Symphony Program?
No.
This is the Cape Cod Symphony Program.
Cape Cod.
So they have competing music in the morning programs?
They do.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question regarding the sixty-five percent of Minnet parent emails are stored in Power Schools. What would you say is the percentage of teachers, um, at Minnet and/or Hammond that are comfortable with using email as a form of communication with parents?
It depends on the teacher, but I know a lot of my staff at Minnet, 'cause that's where I get a lot of communication from staff, do communicate back and forth with parents.
By email.
Do I?
By email?
By email, yes.
Is the expectation set with all teachers that if they're uncomfortable, that really this is the world that we're living in, and, and that most of the, um, the parents of the children, this is how they're communicating now? I mean, I would even like us to go so far one day as texting, nor, you know, which, you know, I know, but, uh, having, mo- most parents, instead of Global Connect, will probably read a text of something that's going on, you'll get to them a lot faster. But even if we can get to, you know, that, that is where we're at now, and most of the parents are more comfortable with email than having to call or having to write a note in.
Right.
And so, you know, are we trying to encourage or train, or something to be able to get the teachers that are not so comfortable, more comfortable, or at least the expectation is set that that's the norm? And the norm that communicating with parents is, is through email.
We can't use email for notes during the day.
If we, yeah. And when I go through my goals when we get to the end of the year, as you are aware, because I think you sat with Terry and I earlier in the year, we have a pilot going where we have some teachers that are working with Power Grade for elementary to open that up. And the reason I'm mentioning this is because then there'll be a list of assignments, there'll be the quick look-up like we have at the secondary school, and that there'll be a click by the parent that will be able to get the email of the teacher, and then right back, the teacher will be able to answer it right back. So that's where we're heading, so that what you're asking for about the communication with email will be happening, um, next year, but that will roll out as part of this program.
And so it will include, I have a concern, the teacher has a concern that's going on in the classroom with the child-
Absolutely.
-and where the parent has a concern is that we need to make sure that that communication is flowing back and forth between the parent and sometimes the parent saying, all right, I have to find time to make sure that I can call them at what time, which is, I'm experiencing right now, so being able, it would just be-
The email will go a lot smoother.
And that I'm fine with, it's just I don't want a parent to email the teacher in the morning and expect an answer back, because if they have their prep first thing in the morning, they won't check email the rest of the day.
Not what I'm looking for, no. Not what I'm looking whatsoever.
Right, so-
It's the expectation that's basically said that-
Yeah, it's just the communication about school.
-I don't use email.
Yeah.
So you have to call, and that's what the culture will change. Thanks.
Right. Uh, resources, as we know, our application was accepted by MSBA. There was a building committee that was established, we're just waiting to go now. We did apply for grants through Makepeace Foundation for Wayham Education. We were able to get those grants. As I mentioned earlier, the anonymous donation allowed us to have a structure at East, and East got the NIAC accreditation. Hammond had to do their annual report to keep the accreditation, and we were able to keep it for another five years. So again, a lot of hard work, and I thank the staff and Mrs. Ames for taking care of that. New goals, so this is looking forward now. We need to train the remaining staff for RTI that would take place at the end, end of June, at the, um, end of the school year. We're looking to purchase additional literacy materials for informational texts that's required by the Common Core standards. We're working with our curriculum director on that. Part of it may depend on the debt exclusion. Student support programs, um, the tutoring program will be changing a little bit. Instead of SES, which was based on income, working with Mr. Lozian, um, having tutoring available to a wide variety of students, not just students who are low income, um, continuing our CARE program.
Just to be clear, you're going to be able to do that with your current budget?
The, what, the student support programs? These are grants. With grants.
SES, my understanding is primarily Title I, correct?
There has been a change in the Title I regulations, and therefore we will be able to use it for tutoring for all children that need it versus just the particular economic that is a change that has happened this spring.
That's why I mentioned Mr. Lozian, it comes from his office, his budget.
That's great news.
That's very good news.
That is really, really good news.
That is awesome.
Thank you.
You'd be happy with that, Jamie. Um, and then PTA, again, continuing our Blasphemy to Books program, because the children have to read for a total of two-hundred-and-forty minutes, and they turn in their reading logs once they do, and they travel around the world, which is the bulletin board, and they receive incentives for that. So that has been a great success. And then we have classrooms that like to compete with each other to see who's read the most minutes. They also do the math incentive program, so we'll continue that as well. And we'd like to increase student participation in Study Island, if that's what we are still going to use next year, and Sumdog, which we may be looking at, um, trying to increase the usage with that. Sumdog, you, the students can go on and compete with students in Scotland. You can narrow down what math skills you want them to work on. It gives us reports. It's free right now, so, um, then they set up these, uh, contests at times, and one of our second graders, um, was the top person to, um, for the scores that they got in the math. So the students are excited and the teachers have liked piloting that this year. For technology, continuing student participation with various equipment, we'd like to hope we can continue the iPad use. I know there'll be discussions about where we use those for next year. Pearson Inform will be able to implement to use for our data collection, which will really be helpful for the teachers, because they'll have data at their fingers, which will be needed to, um, for tiered instruction, for our TAC meetings of strategies for children. And we'll train staff on any new tech, technology initiatives. I know we're looking at possibly going to Gmail instead of something different, so any new technology initiatives we have, we'll make sure that the staff have the training. Community, expand communications with families, and this is what we want to do, um, render a survey them to see what is their preferred means of communication. So we would like to decrease the number of paper copies that we send home and hopefully increase the electronic usage. So if I can email a parent, the new- So, if I can email a parent the newsletter versus copying and sending it home, that would be great. And then we want to sustain our current partnerships, expand if we can. Um, PTA does a lot of great things with our students. This year, we were able to go back to field trips, you know, for every grade level. They bring enrichment programs into our students. The Reading is Fundamental, um, with the guest readers. There's also the Reading is Fundamental book distribution. We give students in, um, pre-K and K three books a year. And that's available through the Dick Maloney Foundation, because they give us the funds to purchase the books. And then we have this new pilot YMCA program that we're looking at for grade three for next year, swim program. So, another way of, of working with our community members.
And they put on, the PTA puts on great fundraisers.
And we, in fact, we had a meeting last night and we're looking at some different companies for next year. So, we're excited for, um, some of the things that we may be able to host for next year. And everything that comes in from fundraisers goes right back out for the students, so. For resources, we need to complete the feasibility study for Minnet Forest. So, we're hopefully going to get that successful passage of debt exclusion and the funding. Um, with the elimination of the assistant principal position at Hammond, we need to examine all possible scenarios for the kindergarten location and the supervision of Hammond. I know that's to be determined yet. I'll be working with, um, Dr. Rabinovich on that and, and staff. We'll continue to submit our grants, um, I have a meeting.
One second, Joan.
Yeah, sorry, just before you move on from the point. So, is the, um, is the discussion throughout this summer talking about going into next year? So, there is talk about, um, moving kindergarten from Hammond to someplace else?
Right, and those are discussions we'll have to have once we know for sure if there's an override and if we are successful in passing an override.
For the extension of the building?
For relocating Hammond.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It is dependent on whether or not the override passes and whether or not there are classroom space available, um, for the kindergartens.
If the override passes, I don't have the classroom space at Minnet, so kindergarten definitely stays at Hammond. If the override does not pass, then I have two scenarios. I have Hammond that could stay at, the kindergarten could stay at Hammond, but there will not be an assistant principal in that building. Or I move the kindergarten students over to Minnet Forest. So, it's not a decision we can make right now, it's, we have to.
Reevaluate once they.
Yes.
Town decides.
And then reconfigure class assignments and special education programs. That's again, based on what we know, what we're going to have to staff. Um, and making sure our special ed programs are efficient with, with the staffing that we have. So, I've given a projection of what class size could look like next year. So, in grade one, we currently have five classes. If we were to keep our, all of our teachers, or we hire the teachers back that received their layoff notices, we're at nineteen to twenty students per class. If I have to reduce by one, we're at twenty-four, twenty-five students for grade one. For grade two, um, if I keep the five classes, they'd have twenty-two to twenty-three students per class. If we reduce by one to four, they're at twenty-eight students next year. Grade three, there's a hundred-and-twenty-five students, this is my bubble class, so I have to keep the five classes. That still gives them twenty-eight students per class. I just put the number in there, I cannot reduce grade three by one because they'd be thirty-one, thirty-two, and that's just not acceptable. Grade four, there's a hundred-and-one students currently. Um, if we kept the five classes, they'd have twenty, twenty-one students. But if I reduce them by one, then they're at twenty-five, twenty-six. And grade five with a hundred-and-twelve, right now they have five classes, they'd be at twenty-two, twenty-three. But if I reduce them by one, they'd be at twenty-eight students per class. So, the bold items are what will take place if those positions are not restored. Um, so there's five classroom positions plus one, four classroom positions, study skills, and a phys ed. Currently, we have a hundred-and-one new registrations for kindergarten. We have six retention, so we have a total of a hundred-and-seven students. I currently have a hundred-and-six kindergarten students. So, this potentially could be a larger class that's coming in, because we still have the summer that we get through where we typically have new registrations. So, this could be another potentially bigger class.
Joan, Mr. Chairman? Since the announcement that we're going to full-day free kindergarten, have you seen an increase in people signing up? Or is that, that news really not gotten out yet and we haven't really seen a big uptick?
This week, we're sending out the letters to inform parents about the change. Um, but it hasn't really changed the registrations, because we captured most of the registrations. We just have to make sure they're aware of the full-day program versus the opt-out, um, portion of it. But if a parent comes to a meeting of an older student and we know there's a kindergarten child, we're catching them right then and there to register their child. And that's the end of that.
Questions, Mike?
No, I don't have any.
Rhonda?
I didn't ask it when you were going through that slide, but the community goals? When you, um, talk about expand communications with families by surveying preferred means of communication, are you also planning to, or could you expand that to talk about, um, parent involvement? You know, again, we, we talk about parent involvement in the middle and parent involvement in the high school. But, and I know that the PTA does a great job and, but there, it seems like this core group that are involved in the schools. Um, but that it's really hard to break that barrier to get more parents involved. Um, if you're already going to be surveying them to talk about means of communication, is there an easy one or two question, um, piece that we can talk about? How to, you know, what would be their preferred means of, um, being engaged to the school? Is it, um, you know, from home, so doing things from home? Or is it, you know, after school? It just, you know, some way that we can take a pulse of, um, of all of the, the parents that are going to be at Minnet and, and the other, um, schools? Try to get them, um, engaged.
One of the requests from last year was increasing communication. So, by hosting the principal's coffee, um, I started at the beginning of the, I think in September, I had a morning coffee. And then it didn't help some of the parents that were working. So, I always did two, I did a morning and an evening one. And we did get an increase in parents that would come to that, but it seemed to be a different group of parents that would go to the PTA meetings. So, I, I need to have them work collaboratively. Um, and there were great information that came out of both sets of, of groups and meetings. But, um, we do want, want to make sure that we're capturing everybody.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Cliff?
Talking about community, I think that, uh, I've mentioned it at the high school before. It's something that I did at my school, but it's certainly something that could be done at, uh, the elementary level. And, and those are principal roundtables, student roundtables at the high school level, but certainly parent roundtables. Um, you know, feed them and they will come. And we provide.
Oh, I do it, the principal's coffee. And PTA?
So.
Not PTA, school council, I feed them.
We sent the formal invitation out, that they were randomly selected and we, we just tried to do it that way. We usually get, we usually got about sixty to sixty-five percent participation, which is really good. But, that being said, uh, I say this every year and it's no indication, uh, no, um, indication as to the thoroughness of your report. But I say it every year and I'll say it again, uh, things that we have to do, I don't consider as goals. So, we, we have to do the training for the RTI. So, I, I personally don't consider that a goal, because it's just something we have to do. But, the thing that I, I'm most amazed at, and you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't make mention of it, is you want to talk about school culture? Put twenty-eight to thirty kids in the classroom. Uh, I'm sure, I'm sure that that will take its toll, uh, by June, uh, in these teachers. They'll be absolutely exhausted. Um, given the set of circumstances that we're working on, given the socioeconomic situation that we have in our school system, given the transient population that we have in our school system, given, uh, students with special needs that we have in our school system, uh, given the fact that we have shrinking resources in our school system, the fact that we're putting twenty-seven and twenty-eight kids in the classroom at the elementary, early elementary level, is criminal. It's criminal. I, I just can't put it any other way, as an educator. And I have to sit here on the school committee and say, oh, that's just what we have to do. Well, you know what? It, it's, it's just, it, it almost makes me want to vomit, uh, to think that that's what we're coming down to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joan, I noticed on your data that you have three hundred of your five-hundred-and-sixty-three students, um, are low income. Is there any evidence that this increase, which is now fifty-three percent, is having an impact on your ability to educate children? Or is it basically an interesting demographic fact, but is irrelevant to the educational process?
I don't think it's into interacting with the, um, educational purpose. But I, I just see a difference in the families and the stress level of families, and it's transferring down to the children. So, we may see more behaviors with the children, because the families can't provide what they need for their children. Um, and then the, the children don't have what they would like to have. So, that's where I'm seeing the impact of the economy that we have right now. Not that we can't provide what we need for them. Um, I think we had more students, you know, in, involved in the CARE program. We have to limit the amount of students that we can have involved in that. And there's usually a waiting list. So, parents want their children to be involved, um, they're willing to have them involved. But I don't see it as an educational interference. I just see it as just, um, the stress of everything.
So, there's no indication that the parents care less? And there's no indication that these children have any more or less difficulty learning?
Based on economy, no. Do we have parents challenging us when we try to discipline their students? Yes, but it has nothing to do with the economy.
Right, exactly, okay. Um, I think I spoke about this last year, but this year it's even more dramatic. And that is, your fifth grade, not just yours, but actually Deacon's as well. The SGP, Student Growth Percentile, for fifth grade math in this district is off the charts positive. Sixty-two percent, which for those of you watching or hearing, means that it's more than twenty percent better than average for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's really significant, especially given the district is at forty-two percent. So, my question is, given the fact that these are, this is a cohort of two-hundred-and-twenty-six kids. That's a big cohort, this isn't just a few bright kids.
Right.
What are we doing right in the fifth grade of this district to make those numbers happen?
We actually had a great fifth grade group last year as well.
Exactly.
And I'd say the biggest thing that we did right was the everyday math program. That really has raised the bar for students for math.
Stop. Sixth grade math for the district, those same fifth graders.
When did we implement, was last year, was the first year of this new math program?
Right, they didn't have it.
So, the children who were in fifth grade last year got the new math curriculum. The children in this year's fifth grade are getting the new math curriculum. So, this year's sixth grade class is the fifth grade that had the new math curriculum last year. And we implemented the new math curriculum this year at the middle school for that same math program for grade six. So, we don't have the scores yet. This year, we did do the new thing.
Right.
Yes.
And I compare one to the other.
I, that's, that was my point.
Yes.
So, the children who are sitting in grade six had the new math curriculum last year and are having it this year. And I believe that the scores will also show that the SGP has increased for our grade six. Because after analyzing the problem, we put a new curriculum in at the elementary school two years ago. And as I've said before up here, it takes time to show the improvement. And this is two years of it, and let's continue with it.
Last, two years ago, was the first fifth, was the first fifth grade class with this new curriculum, correct?
Last year.
One year.
One year.
One year, so there's, because as I said, I thought a year ago, we were looking at data that also showed an anomalous positive for fifth graders.
But they were the first year of having that new curriculum.
Fair, fair enough, but they would now be, for these data, they would be now sixth graders.
No. The data in there was from last year's NCATs.
Right.
I agree, but in two thousand and ten.
They did not have the.
They didn't have everyday math, that particular year.
I don't know what curriculum they had, but I'm saying, I believe, I could be wrong. They, there was also an extraordinary positive in the fifth grade. You don't think that's the case?
No.
Okay, so what you're saying is when we get the SGP data for the sixth graders for two thousand and twelve, we should continue to see this significant improvement?
Yes, sir.
I look forward to it, okay.
I also like that at fifth grade, we have the teams.
Yeah.
At fifth grade, we have the teaming. So, we have two teachers that add team teaching. So, one teacher's teaching math to two section of students.
Because the sixth graders, your, fifth grade across the district is at sixty-two for math. Sixth graders are at thirty-seven. So, for sixth graders for two thousand and twelve, the, what we've essentially completed now, if that's now dramatically up into the high fifties or sixties, that will mean, that's a huge change and a hugely positive change. And should give all of us hope that we finally have what we need to solve the math problem in this district. I'll be waiting with great anticipation to see those numbers. Anything else for Joan, Mike?
Um, just to build on something that you brought up earlier, and I thank you for asking the question about the economics and the, and how that impacts learning. Uh, I was curious, and you, you seem to say it doesn't impact it, you, you're not seeing it. And I'm just, I'm just wondering, are these students able to access the extracurricular stuff as well? You know, band, um, destination imagination, are they, are they, do they participate?
Yes, they do.
They do?
Um, and there, one of the pages in my plan, it shows you exactly how many people participate. Give it to you in two seconds. So, we have band and chorus, we have intermurals. In addition to the, the CARE and the tutoring. So, if you look on page fourteen of the plan, it lists, um, intermurals, CARE, the tutoring, band instruction, chorus, recorder, um, jump rope for heart, we do once a year. We have a grade five yearbook committee, destination imagination. Uh, we do the punt, pass, and kick. We have a grade five newspaper, and then student news and review. So, it ranges on the participation, so they do access it.
Great, thank you.
All set, Mike?
All set, thank you.
Joan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan.
Good luck and thank you for.
Thanks.
And thank your staff for us.
Another good year.
I will.
And thank you, school council members. Mr. Palladino? Welcome.
Thank you.
So, do you have anybody with you or you're all by yourself?
I gave him the night off.
Oh, mag man.
It's been a long month for a, a high school.
And tomorrow night, um, we didn't mention it before, but tomorrow night is the underclassmen of academic awards at Larian High School at seven o'clock at the, um, high school auditorium.
Tonight is the winter-spring concert for Deacon's at the auditorium. Should have started at six o'clock.
I just, I came from there when I, when I got here. It was great.
Thank you.
And we have sixth grade.
On Monday.
And I think tomorrow is introduction of sixth graders to middle school. Yes.
Okay, so what I've done for you today is I've broken this presentation up into thirds and basically, uh, just cut and pasted a little bit from, uh, the school improvement plan that you have, or I believe you received last Friday. So, there's, again, there's three parts. So there's, again, there's three parts. The first part, I just want to touch upon the process for creating this plan. Even though we gave the school council the night off, we had input from them. Most recently, in the last two meetings, as Dr. Sylvia mentioned, we meet with the students through leadership team meetings and roundtable meetings to get their input. We met with department heads to get their input. We met with staff several times to get their input. Parents, also, this will be through, through the survey as well. Other administrations such as the deans and the assistant principal, central administration, the analysis, analysis of the NEAS report and the analysis of the student, parent, staff, and the MASTEL surveys. Most importantly, we looked at the needs of our students. I didn't give you everything off the parent survey, but I wanted to give you some of.
That was me, sorry.
I wanted to give, I'm not used to these speakers. I wanted to give you some of the positives and some of the negatives and some of that was in between, we left off. But this was the parent survey. We mailed out a hundred self-addressed envelopes. We received nineteen back. This was a little bit better than the email survey that we did last year, but we did get nineteen. And again, we mailed these out with self-addressed envelopes to return back to the school. So we spent about forty-four dollars on that and we got nineteen back. The good news is we got some, some positive responses and some areas that we kind of felt were positive. But safety was a huge hit with parents. We do, I think we do a great job in regards to the safety of the children at Warrimah High School. Ninety-five percent feel their child is safe in school. Eighty-nine percent feel their child enjoys school. And what I'm really happy about, which was, as you may remember, one of my goals last year, was my child knows at least one adult in the school who knows him or her. So I'm very excited about that, hundred percent, felt they had one adult. And I think that's because of the dean system, the guidance system that was always in place, and the advisory system. So very excited about that. Ninety-five percent feel their child feels valued, respected at school by the teachers, counselors, and administrators. So that was the parent survey. That was kind of the highlights of the parent survey. Student survey.
One second, Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Scott, sorry. So you have seven-hundred-and-forty-four students that go to Warrimah High School. Why were only one-hundred sent out?
Dr. Benovic?
Because of the random, is that correct? You use the random number generator and.
Random sample.
To take approximately ten percent of the population. So instead of sending it to everybody, you do a random sample and it is just as valid. In fact, it's more valid than mailing it to everyone.
Not if you get nineteen back?
Nineteen out of a hundred, when it's random, is better than when we mail out seven-hundred and you get twenty back.
Okay, since, the only other thing that I would say is that why aren't we doing both when email doesn't cost us anything? Why aren't we sending it?
We did that last year and the response was, I believe we received eleven back on.
All I'm saying is that if, if we're gonna, if we're basically saying that we're going to send them out through mail and email doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't hurt us to do both.
Sure. We'll give that a try next year. Student survey, not including the seniors, we surveyed the underclassmen and some parallels here. Eighty-five percent feel safe in school. A little change here, sixty percent enjoy school, a little concern there. Seventy-five percent feel they know at least one adult and seventy-one percent feel they're valued, respected at school by the teachers, counselors, and administrators.
Any questions?
Sure.
How's the question asked, enjoy school?
Agree, do you, and I'm paraphrasing, I have all the surveys and I know Dr. Benovic is gonna come down and check on them. I believe the question is, which one, the safety or the?
The enjoy school.
Do you feel safe in the high school? And then it's strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree.
Be enjoy school.
But what about enjoys?
Enjoy, uh, do you enjoy school, I believe, is the way the question is worded.
Yeah, we might want to, want to look at that question. We had the same conversation when it came to West Warrimah Academy and if you basically ask a student whether they enjoy school. Somebody told me that I, do I enjoy work? Like, really? So it's basically, you know, what are we, what are we hoping to get out of that question? You know, and I don't know if it's, you know, in, in joy in a way that I'd rather be here than going to Waterwiz.
Right.
It's more, do they feel that it is a quality environment to have an educational experience or whatever, so.
Okay, teacher survey, similar, similar questions. Students, do they feel safe in school? Ninety-three percent felt the students are safe in school. School promotes respect and understanding of people with diverse backgrounds. Ninety-nine percent agree. This is a concern and this is actually a driving factor, as you'll see in one of my school improvement goals. Communication between the parents and teachers is satisfactory and fifty-three percent agree, forty-seven percent disagree. And I found this interesting and Jan, I think you will as well. We can make improvements to our instructional program and ninety-five percent agree. So I definitely, that's something we're gonna concentrate on as well as part of our school improvement program.
So it's fair, fair to say you've had Power School for a number of years now. So the actual technical ability for parents and teachers to communicate is there. I mean, it's, it's not a problem. It's literally a click of a mouse.
If there's a will, there's definitely a way.
So the problem is not technology. The problem is, as you point out, the will to communicate.
It, it's so easy, once you get on, I mean, you're clicking the name of the teacher and it gives you their email address and there's instant communication. The teachers, as Joan mentioned, you know, they check during their prep, they check their emails. For the most part, they're very good about getting back to people, whoever it is, whether it be administration, fellow teacher, or parent. It's, it's a great tool. What, and I'm sure when Terry does her presentation, you'll see the percentage of parents that use it. It could be used a whole lot more by the parents to, to check in on their students, to see what's going on. And unfortunately, it's used by not a great percentage, not as great as we'd like anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One of the issues with this particular question is, when we look at the data of who uses Power School at the middle school, overwhelmingly, it's parents. When we move to the high school, it's overwhelmingly students and not parents. And so part of it is that children wanting to become more independent and parents, maybe it's my third child and I'm getting a little tired at that time, but for whatever reason, they do communicate less and that's what you're seeing there. The teachers would like to have more parent-teacher communication.
And I think the, part of the reason why the number is skewed as well is during advisory period, the students are required at different points in times to log in and show their advisory teacher where their, where their standings are in regards to their classes. So I know that's why the numbers are skewed a little bit more, maybe than they would be in most schools in regards to the percentage of students that are logging in versus the percentage of parents. I really liked this survey because we had almost everyone involved and it was anonymous and it was web-based. And there's some things that, you know, I certainly want to take a look at, but what concerns me is the first one. Class sizes are reasonable such that teachers have time available to meet the needs of the students and twenty-three percent agreed. And obviously, as we know, the class size is gonna change.
Just to be clear, who are the respondents?
These are all teachers.
All teachers.
Teachers.
And does that sixty-one mean sixty-one percent of your staff?
No, sixty-one teachers, everyone.
Sixty-one of your teachers responded to this?
Correct.
Out of?
Sixty-two point five.
Okay, so almost all the teachers.
Correct.
And this was a statewide survey that was done. And we'll be bringing later district-wide data on this, but this is the high schools.
I'm happy with this one with the change in the schedule. Teachers are protected from duties that interfere with their essential role of educating students. I'm not sure where the twenty-eight percent that disagree go, but basically, as, as you remember, last year, we got rid of the duties. We changed the schedule. Teachers picked up an extra period and it's been going really well. I'm happy that eighty-two percent recognize that. Not sure where the other twenty-eight percent are, but that's, I think that's a good number. This kind of parallels with the previous question. Families help students achieve educational goals in this school. Twenty-six percent agree, seventy-four percent disagree.
Scott, I, I hate to be picky, but eighty-two and twenty-eight adds up to a hundred and ten.
Oh, you're sorry, eighteen, excuse me.
Okay.
Something high. Social services are available to ensure that all students are ready to learn. Seventy-three percent feel that we have those and I'm happy that we have those. We have an adjustment counselor in place that works hard to make sure that the students that need adjustment have that adjustment. And we also have a psychologist in guidance department that works hard with those kids.
Is your overall sense, and I hate to use the word, but I guess I'm going to use it, that, that a significant percentage of parents are essentially abdicating their role as parents once they get to high school? And if that's too strong a word, feel free to correct me.
I think what you, you have a percentage of parents, and, and I think it's fairly small, that didn't have a great high school experience. So maybe there's a little intimidation there in regards to the high school. I think as Dr. Benovic said, you know, maybe it's, they've, they've kind of become frustrated with their, their child and their education. I, I feel that if you have an involved parent, you've got a student who's on his or her game in the classroom. And that, you know, I, I think that's the key and that's part of our communication piece, is trying to get the parents more involved. We've started a high school PTA to get parents involved. And so there's some things we're trying to do to get the parents involved. It's, it's kind of frustrating because at the time where students are making decisions that are probably gonna affect them the most in their life, the parents have kind of given them their space, which the kids are crying for, as you know, with teenagers. And the reality is that's the point in time when they need to pull, pull the reins in and, and really help guide them through these decisions that they're making that are gonna have a drastic effect on their future. We have a tremendous problem with freshman failure rate that I'll get into in a little while. And the guidance counselors are very concerned because the decisions they're making as freshmen are affecting their GPA, which in three years, when they smart, you know, hopefully they're smart enough for three years, but when they start to get on that right track, the GPA is at a point where it's gonna limit their opportunities. So certainly one of our goals is gonna be to make sure we have that good communication. We have a plan to start with a freshman, to get a contract with the parents, to try and get these, the parents on board and involved in being, signing this contract which is gonna require them to attend meetings with guidance counselors, with teachers, to really try and get involved. And I think it's our job, if these parents do feel disenfranchised or intimidated by the high school, to try and figure out a way, and I heard Joan mention, feed them and they'll come. That's something that we, we need to look at, to get people in there, to get people involved. Tomorrow night, we have an academic awards night. But those probably aren't, to stereotype those parents, those probably aren't the parents that we need to get involved in this communication. It's the parents that didn't have a student invited to that awards night that we need to get involved.
Yes.
It's not something that just happened over the summertime, that they were, you know, in eighth grade, they were still engaged in making right choices and things like that. They have a summer and then all of a sudden they come to high school and now they, all of a sudden they dropped off. And I don't think from, from a parent perspective, that's probably there either. Is there, have you talked to Principal Gilmore? Is there collaboration or communication between the two of you? Is there something going on in that eighth grade year also that's, that's then transferring over to high school?
We, we've had several conversations and actually, we're, we're getting together for lunch next week to have, continue our conversation on that transition. It's, it's hard to say. I just think that it's a different structure in high school and there's different requirements. And maybe there's a little more freedom in regards to, it's not that house system. Certainly, something that we've looked at is possibly creating a freshman academy at some point in time so we can really keep, kind of keep our, our thumbs on these kids when they're transitioning into that high school experience. So there's a, there's a few things we're looking at that I can tell you there's good communication between Mr. Gilmore and myself. But we're real, it's, it's, we're still working it out, trying to figure out exactly what's going on and why we're having the, the issues that we're having with the freshmen. The good news is that usually by sophomore year, they start picking it up and, and owning it. But my concern is, how detrimental has that freshman year been because of the decisions that, that the students have made?
I gotta put.
I'm sorry.
And just playing catch-up is always difficult, so if we can have safety nets or something in place to.
Exactly.
You got something?
Yes.
I got, I, I received a presentation from a very large high school in a Chicago suburb. They have something called, of course, it's an acronym, ILPs, Individual Learning Plans. And every, and this happened to be a high school district. And every student was required to show up with their parents sometime before they started their high school experience and talk about where they were, where they wanted to go, how they wanted to get there, and most importantly, what they were gonna have to do to get where they wanted to go. And sometimes the parents were somewhat shocked to hear that their students were not ready for certain high school courses that they should have been ready for, et cetera. I love the idea. Is that feasible organizationally to do in Warrimah?
You know, we, we have a, a program that's very successful in our special ed department, which is Core Academics, which basically is very similar to what you described. My, my hope is that advisory can be that venue where those conversations are happening. As far as meetings.
But advisory is student-teacher, it's not.
Right, as far as meetings with parents, something we're gonna have to look at. I can tell you that there are very few afternoons right now, which is good, that we don't have at least two meetings going on in the high school for parents. And that also brings in eight teachers for each student. So there's, there are meetings that are occurring. A lot of them, a percentage of them are IEP meetings, but there are meetings that are occurring. But I think it's something we have to look at because I, I do believe, again, that's another way of getting the parents on board, getting them involved. And it's a nice segue for me to give them the Power School information. This is all the information you need on Power School, you know, and we try and dovetail every meeting into, are you able to get on Power School? Are you able to check with the students' progress? And if not, make sure we give them the handout. We have a nice little printout that gives the, the directions on what they would need to do to log in, how they can go in and check the progress, all the features of Power School, because there are quite a few features. You know, you can sign up for emails, things of that nature. So it's, it's, I think it's in-depth, but certainly it's something we need to look at.
It's interesting because I know the elementary schools have a process where they literally sit down one-on-one with a future kindergartner to essentially interview them without their parents there, but their parents are sort of lurking in the back, watching their very young child interact with a teacher for the first time. That's their introduction to essentially school. If we continued that process, okay, you've made it through elementary school, now let's talk about middle school. Then you've made it through middle school, now let's talk. It, it would seem to me that as healthy as that process appeared to be for a future kindergartner, we shouldn't stop it. And every child deserves that individual learning plan and every parent needs to be involved in it. And now I'm starting to sound like an educator and that's a mistake, but it just seems intuitively a good idea, especially given there's dissatisfaction with the communication with, with parents. And of course, we have a, you know, I don't know, a twenty percent dropout rate or, or whatever, so.
Twenty percent?
Well, I know, it depends on how you calculate it. We, we have an average dropout rate. What, what in your mind is the, is the?
Less than two percent, in my mind.
Then we're talking about two different numbers and that's.
Are you talking about the four-year graduation rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, that's what I meant, the four-year graduation.
That's what I thought you meant.
Yes, sorry. And what is that number from your perspective?
Eighty.
Low eighties?
Yeah, I was gonna say eighty-two is what I was.
Okay, yeah, eighteen percent, okay. Yes, we were talking two.
Okay.
Two different numbers. Thank you for correcting me.
Okay, you got me nervous there.
No, 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 okay. So anything we can do to improve that graduation rate? It seems to me, there are some people who think that that graduation rate is impacted by what goes on in elementary school. But it certainly could be enhanced if we improve communication, but I've said enough. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm, I'd like to first update you on last year's plan and I'm, I'm gonna, I'll try and go fast here, but and obviously, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The goal number one was on student achievement. And basically, we were offering a science course that was our MCAS-tested course, the intro to the physical world. It's a freshman year course. For the most part, honors freshmen take biology, but I would say eighty percent of the kids are involved in this course. In the past, it was taught by, every teacher in the department taught one class. What we did this year was with the help from Jan and the curriculum office and Anna, we were able to purchase textbooks, which we did not have textbooks for this class. So we were able to do that over the summer. We followed the district policy, had a committee. We reviewed, I think, four books, Jan? Four books and went through the merits of all four of them. Ironically, it came up a unanimous decision in regards to which book to use. Jan, I don't know how she did it, but she negotiated free internet access from the publishing company, which usually there's a charge for that. company, which usually there's a charge for that, and so that was great. That gave a lot of supplementation as well for the teacher, or teachers, excuse me. We established two teachers to teach this versus the six that we had before. What we did as well is we relocated these two teachers' classes, so they could be next to each other, and also right next door to the department head. The only thing that we are going to continue to work on, and I know I spoke with Jan on this, and this is, I would say, largely because of NEASK, and because of the new evaluation system, we couldn't come up with the five professional days, and it was more just that we didn't have the professional days. It wasn't that, it was a, a funding issue. It was just, logistically, with NEASK, with the follow-up to NEASK, and with the evaluation, we ran out of days. So obviously, that's something we're going to look to do for this year, is to provide that professional development, and, and, and actually, we're going to have a new teacher in there as well. So we'll be providing professional development to get that person up to speed as well. So that's what happened, and again, the only thing that didn't take place was the, the PD for the teachers. Are we good with that?
Yeah, well, sorry, Scott. Just so you know, I think that, I remember when we first started going through the goals and, and the relocate classroom, I think I said something then, and I'll just basically say it now, it makes me mental, that we have a goal that is to relocate a class, and then we relocate it. To me, that is, this goal is about, and so just in preparing for it next year, the goal is around student achievement. So I would want to know that one of the things that we did, so the goal is basically that we're, that we've increased, like we did for science, MCAS scores improved by 5%. You know what I mean? That, what, what did that do? Just moving a classroom is just, it's something that we do to be able to get there. So just, just so you know, when we're talking about goals, it's-
Sure. Our, our next goal, what we found in, in, as you know, we spent time in either August or early September with looking at MCAS scores, and, and obviously, we spend more time than that over the summer. We spend a lot of time, time trying to diagnose MCAS scores and predict some scores, and now with the INFORM, I think this is going to be even easier for us. But we found that, and we didn't have this in place for the previous few years, is that the students that were struggling in 10th grade in the MCAS were very easy to identify who those kids were going to be. There were very few surprises every once in a while. You might have a surprise with someone who's dealing with some outside-of-school issues, but there were no surprises. So we wanted to, back a few years ago, we had created core math classes. Unfortunately, they had gone by the wayside with the budget. One thing that we wanted to do when we changed the schedule and teachers picked up an extra period was to create some core math classes. I felt that by giving those students the foundation in 9th grade, in 10th grade, and basically what it constituted was the students in the core math class would have math every single day versus every other day, and we did the same thing in English for 9th and 10th graders. And although I, I can't say, I, I say that the classes were set up, I'm saying that the results were pending, and you know, I'll be here in the fall to give you an update, as I always do, on the MCAS SAT and AP testing. So I'll ask you to stay tuned as far as the results on that, but I think they'll be positive. Obviously, we doubled the amount of time they're spending on that specific content area. Okay, one of the driving factors for, for our new schedule was the alignment with the Mass Core, which was a requirement. We came up with the new block schedule, which had four periods each day. We spent a lot of time, and I definitely want to thank Dr. Rabinovich and the WEA for working on that. It, it helped out our students immensely. We were able to offer some elective courses. We were able to offer more courses, get rid of study halls. Not sure where that's going to be this year, but, this next year rather, but this year was very successful. It was great that the kids were very involved, they were able to take electives. So I, I, when I met with my, my roundtable group, which is, we, we just select 15 kids, and the computer spits out 15 names, there were kids that were very excited about classes that they weren't that excited about when they started this, this journey in September, and they were very appreciative of the fact that they were forced to take a sociology class, or maybe not class. So we did increase our course offerings, we did increase our electives, and we were able to get the new schedule in place, and the teachers teach six periods in the rotation versus the five that they taught before. And we also, a piece to this alignment with the Mass Core, was to increase the school-to-career offerings, which we were able to do, and as I mentioned previously, increase the elective offerings. And the, the evaluations in school-to-career were very positive. We, we tried to, we did an interest inventory in the school-to-career, and we tried to match the students up with areas that they would be interested in, and we had some, some great locations, some great help with the community, and locations that we couldn't have, because before, the classes had, the locations had to be available for a 7:40 a.m. drop-off or thereabouts, depending on the bus route. And now, the start time 11:21, every professional business is open at that point in time during the week. So we were able to, we had more opportunities, and hopefully, as we move forward, we'll continue to have more opportunities for our students to have a professional experience. So that is the, the alignment with the Mass Core.
Yes. Talked about this when the cooperative came in, and talked about school choice, or, you know, after work, and there was concern that the after-school placement, or, you know, that leaving school early to then go to a placement, that there, you know, wasn't really being met. If students lose their job, or, you know, or do they come back into school, or?
We only had one student, maybe two, it might have been the same, it was one location, and it wasn't because of the student. It was a confidentiality issue, and we were able to relocate them in a, in a similar setting. I'm not going to say every year that, that we're as, as good as we were this year, was a really good group of kids. There are times where the match isn't working out one way or another, but we have a teacher that is assigned to check on the students. We have great communication with the locations. We have paperwork that's filled out, evaluations that are done, time sheets, and then there's always reflection that goes on as well. So it wasn't an issue this year. I'm gonna knock on wood, but I know it has been an issue in the past, and we've had to deal with it, reassign. Sometimes, matter of fact, in time, sometimes it happens kind of at that midway point, and we reassign the student to a couple of classes. But there is a starting point, and there is an ending point where they come back, they come back in to the school at the end of the day. It's not like we're sending them to work and we don't see them again. They leave at 11:20, and they're back at 2:05, and they, there's a check-in at both times, and there's check-ins at the locations where they're working as well.
But there is a plan that if someone where you just, that they've been laid off economy, whatever it is, and you can't find another placement, that there is a, you, you bring them back in and assign them classes?
We've done that in the past, but usually, places are, places are pretty much not-
I just want to make sure that there is an alternative, if it's not just-
Sure, and locations are, are very happy to have a student come in and gain some experience in their, in their venue.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay, as we, I think we mentioned, when we were looking at the AP scores, I guess it would have been about two years ago, we had realized, as we started to dissect the scores and why they were low, that some of the people that were teaching AP hadn't been to professional development, and some that had, it was 10 years ago, and obviously, the test has changed. And so what we did through the help from curriculum office and superintendent's office, we provided the opportunities for all AP teachers to attend the summer institute, and everyone but two went to the training, and this is on their time. We paid for the course, but they gave up a week in the summer, and I think I may have mentioned this in the fall when I did my AP presentation. And the two that couldn't make it, one had major surgery, and one, his wife had major medical issues, but everyone else went. They all came back excited to teach the course, they're excited with, to have the new supplementation, new ideas. So it was, it was a great week that was spent, and, and we had people go. One gentleman went to Albany, one went to Vermont, but most of them were in Fitchburg here in Massachusetts. And the reason they were at those locations is because they were there for the, with their family. It wasn't, it wasn't that we were paying for them to drive out to Albany and stay in a hotel or anything like that. It was, it was all because of the family and commitments they had with their family in those areas.
That was my question, don't worry, I was gonna challenge you on that one.
Okay.
We talked a lot about AP scores last year. So are you anticipating that we're going to see a significant increase in those scores based on this training?
I believe we'll see increases. I'd, I'd want to know your definition of significant. We will see increases, I am sure of that. And we were, we were really hoping to get involved in Mass Insight. We spent a lot of time, Dr. Rabinovich, Jan, Debbie Freitas, and myself, and we spent a lot of time, every time we turned in an RFP, there was another RFP, and we had site visits, and allegedly, we were the last one cut, so we'll be looking at that again next year. I'm really hoping that we can put some pressure on them to allow us to join them, and what basically, just to give you a brief description of the program, is they provide curriculum, they provide training, they provide-
Coaching.
Coaching to come in, and what they also provide is, is basically a social network for AP teachers to talk about their craft and to discuss different ideas, what's working, what's not working. And it's just a, it's a great program. Unfortunately, they only have a certain amount of money, but we're hoping to get on board with them again next year. At least now, I think we're confident in the process. We just need to make sure we can get, be one of the top eight schools.
And monetary incentives for increased participation in AP, as well as increased scores on the AP test.
Did they give you any indication, either through you or through Jan, on why we were not selected, given the fact that I think we've got a full-range AP program? And certainly, we could certainly use the tutelage, so-
They said, yes.
Did they give you any indication as to why we were not selected?
They told me to call our local politicians and encourage them to try and find some funding. So I, I think it's, you know-
Well, somebody must have been funded.
There was, I believe there were nine schools that were funded, I believe we were number 10, and part of this is, there is, state does fund part of this, and I guess they didn't fund as much as they were hoping for, obviously, with the tough times.
So Mass Insight is a private organization?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Scott, did you, were you finished?
No, but go on, then I'll do my thing. No, you might ask the same questions, Mike, go ahead.
I never like anomalies. I look at math SGP's, and they're, with the exception of our wondrous 5th grade class, which hopefully is going to continue to get better and better and better, the math scores are not particularly good. In fact, they get, they, they hit about 34 in 8th grade. This was 2011 results. 34 in 8th grade, and the English results are 38.5 in 8th grade. What's anomalous is the fact that two years later, the math continues to go down. In fact, it hits its nadir at 30.5 for 10th grade math, but, drumroll, the English results skyrocket to, let's call it, high 50s, low 60s, one year was even up to 70. To me, that's an anomaly. Can you explain that anomaly for me?
Good English teachers.
Thanks, Cliff. I think math is tough for our students. I, I will say, do I have, can I explain it? I'd rather not on camera, but I will tell you that we are making changes, and I, I believe we're heading in the right direction. We're still in the infancy of these changes, but we know what the problem is, and certainly, I'd, I'd be willing to have a private conversation with you on that, but we know what the problem is. We have staff that are working very hard. We're hoping this override passes, so we can get books in those classrooms. We're working hard on, over the summer, tying in with the National Common Core in regards to the curriculum. So there are some positive things that are going on. I don't think this has been an issue over one year, this has been an ongoing issue, but I do believe that we are addressing the issue, and I'm sure when we have that conversation, you'll be confident that that is being addressed. And they were, the teachers in the math department have been working extremely hard this year. I think we'll see some incremental increases in the MCAS scores this year, but I really think next year is going to be a big year for us. I really think we're gonna, we've got some ideas, we've got some plans, and I hope that the override passes and we can get some books in these classrooms, because just so we're clear, there are classes that have one classroom set of books, okay? And when you look at the classes that have books for every student, they're so old, they're falling apart.
I, I don't want the positive to, to be left out of what I said, though. You have proven with the English department that really good things can be done.
Every student scored above a 220 last year in the 10th grade MCAS.
So-
And that's, in the eyes of the state, that's needs improvement or better.
Right, so those kind of results in the English department are great, and unfortunately, you've proven it can be done, and so we expect-
I don't see that as unfortunate.
Well, my point is, that means we, your school committee, or at least this one school committee member's expects it in every department. Yes, Cliff?
I, I think that one of the, one of the things in, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but I can make an assumption on this too, is, what, I think in English, that we've, we were really on the cutting edge in infancy in bringing alternative assessments in and using the portfolio in the English department. Now we've got the portfolio going school-wide, and now all of the core curriculum areas are participating in the portfolio process, and that in itself, I think, is going to do a lot for increasing your student performance, student growth percentages. So I think that, I, I think that having that portfolio, school-wide, through all, through all the core areas, will be a way, I think, in which kids can focus in with more of a fine-tooth comb in the other core areas. That's just my gut, just from my assessment background.
I think the portfolio helps. I think the, the big pieces this year, we've had common prep time, and the department has gotten together, specifically, the department 9th grade, 10th grade, in regards to the MCAS, and they have really spent a lot of time looking at the curriculum, picking out areas that they really need to, to spend time on, and I think the other piece is, as I mentioned before, the core math class, we've identified students that have deficiencies, and we've placed them in small, smaller classes, with a certified math teacher who works with these students on their deficiencies, to hopefully bring them up, so they're no longer deficient. So I think there's, there's probably about four or five initiatives, if you will, that we have taken onboard this year, and I, I think we're going to see some positive results. It's going to take time. These results didn't get to this point in time in a year, but I do believe that when I'm in front of you in, in the fall, we will see some positive steps, and I think with another year under our belt, we'll continue to move forward.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, with everything going on, there was the community service requirement that we're going to keep onboard for this year for school improvement. It just never was able to, to come to fruition. Obviously, I understand there was a lot going on with NEASK and, and the new schedule, and so unfortunately, this didn't formalize, but I am happy to say that we did have two people from the high school that did attend a one-day seminar on community service requirements and capstone projects, and hopefully, we'll have that in place for next year, so that will remain on as a school improvement goal for next year. We had some issues with the physical plan I mentioned last year, and I feel if they have a positive classroom environment, they're gonna, they're gonna stay focused and be able to learn, and when it's very hot in a classroom, it's a tough environment to stay focused, especially at this point in time of the year. So we were able to fix all the windows. We replaced the existing carpet. The only room left is the auditorium, the bandroom, and a little section of the portables, but I, we were able now, and this has been a process over about seven years. If you remember, if you were in the high school seven years ago, the whole high school was all carpet, and we were able to pull that all up over seven years, and so we are, just about will be done after this, the summer. So I'm very excited about that, and the windows, especially with MCAS testing, it's, it's great that we can actually open those up and get some fresh air flowing in these classrooms.
If you have a window.
If you have a window. I don't have a window.
Scott, I don't remember the last, I don't know when you were last in room 119. I was there today for a required CPR for a state course. You may want to walk in there sometime and take a look up.
Yes. We got the, the bid on that, and I'm gonna have to wait until after, I just got the bill, the quote, rather, we're gonna have to wait till after July 1st to get that fixed. Another, I know you're surprised, but it actually, believe it or not, it ties into the roof.
Oh, my goodness.
And then it comes right down the side into that classroom, but we do have, we, we think we can get that actually fixed-
Great, thank you.
-after July. After July first. Okay, I, I know you, I'm sure you've heard it from all the principals and you'll continue here. You know, one of our goals last year, and it will remain a goal this year, even though we did meet it for this goal, is to improve the technology. Right now, just so we're clear, we do not have a, a general lab that can be utilized by all of our teachers. There are some rooms that have computers in them, some work, some don't. But there's actually, there's not a room to go into and bring your whole class down there and utilize a computer lab. So we have been replacing, we replaced fifty computers. We have made sure that when we, when I call, when I say replace, it's not reassign an old computer. It's actually, this computer is old. We're replacing it and putting that in the obsolete. And then Anna has the fields and grounds. They go through a process where it's obsolete and, and do what they need to do. And then eventually it's recycled. So we were able to do that. Part of that, just so we're clear, was through the NEASK process because their requirement for technology was so great. And obviously, we didn't have the technology they needed. That was how we were able to do that. We also were able to get some donations from the military, computers for them that are three years old, are obsolete. Computers, to me, that are three years old are, are brand new and it brings down my average age of computers. So we were able to do that. With some help from the GROTC, they have some connections. We're able to get us some computers that way as well. We were hoping to mount LCD projectors in the classrooms. I feel if you can make the techno, the technology hard mounted, hardwire it, it's gonna last longer. And our goal was to have fifteen of these. Unfortunately, we, we didn't have the money for fifteen. We did purchase, I believe, a half dozen. And our goal is, again, for this year is to get fifteen of those mounted, hardwired. It requires bringing an electrician to put power up on the, on the drop ceiling. And we're gonna continue to hopefully get that done over the summer. That's one of our goals that we'll have to stay on. Okay, any questions on, on last year's plan? Okay, moving on. As I mentioned, based on, and, and this is just picking up on the paperwork that you received. Based on some of the surveys and staff, we have a problem, and I don't think it's unique to us this year, with the freshmen. A lot of it has to do with classwork and homework. And as, as you know, there's a direct relationship with that classwork and homework and the assessment scores. So we want to create an intervention program for all incoming freshmen. Our goal is to find a way, whether it's through grants, Wayham Public School, Wayham High School funding, is to post and hire an intervention coordinator who will work for four hours a week with the students. We're gonna require that the parents sign off on paperwork, requiring the freshmen stay after two days a week with the teachers. They'll be tracked. There will be a meeting that they'll have beforehand where they sign on. And then there'll be quarterly meetings to update, similar to what Mr. Swett said about having meetings. This will be just with freshmen that are pre-identified based on their first month's schoolwork. We're really hoping to, to catch these kids early and, and to give them that foundation so that they're not in a position, as I mentioned before, where freshman year, you know, their GPA is very low, they have to go to summer school. Some of the students, you know, Mr. Swett mentioned the eighty-two percent four-year graduation rate. And now, you know, we're, we're hoping to improve that by kicking off this, this intervention program. Any questions on the intervention program?
Good luck with it. Sounds great. I hope we can afford it.
We're gonna try and find a way with it through grants or creative funding, whatever we can do. I think this is, this is very important.
That's what I was gonna ask, is, is that included in the current budget?
It's not, but where there's a will, there's a way. We're gonna figure it out. I really believe this is one of the important pieces to improving our school is getting these freshmen on board. And obviously, there's, there's, the payout will be the next three years. These students hopefully have the skills, they're focused, they have the study skills. Parents are involved. This is just another, hopefully another tool for us to get these kids on board and, and get them in a position so when they're seniors, they're able to get into the schools that they want. Because there were some seniors this year that couldn't get in because of the GPA to the schools that they really wanted to attend. And, and these are kids, these kids I'm talking about really picked it up the last two to three years. But because of decisions they made when they were fourteen years of age, it, it affected them.
Scott, what do you mean, the decisions that they make? Are they talking, are you talking socially, academically?
Probably a little bit of both, probably more academically. I don't think it's as much a social issue as you would think. It's, it's more just, I, I think it's a study skill issue, to be quite honest. Organization is part of it. Maturity certainly is part of it. But hopefully with some, some guidance from the parents, from this intervention, interventionist, and, and from the teachers now, because they're gonna be seeing these kids, staying after for them. Remember, the teachers are after every Tuesday and Thursday as part of our contract. They're after for almost forty minutes. And it, a lot of students do take advantage of it, but not enough.
One of the things, if I can, one of the things that they do in college is that for the freshman, for the incoming freshman, you have the option, another way to get money out of parents, to have them go there the week before and actually do a, a study skills workshop. They do it for a week or three days or something like that, but it's teaching them basics like how to keep a schedule, how to study on your own, how to keep notes, you know, just all the, the kind of tools that you need to be able to do it. Have we thought about the summer, you know, before these freshmen that are coming in, being able to get a volunteer or someone to donate their time or something to be able to do that kind of workshop for our incoming freshmen that are coming in?
Well, we've done, we'll, we'll be doing orientation next Tuesday. I know that's, you know, there's two months in between that and the time they actually walk through the doors. I'd love, there's a lot of things I'd love to do, but they require funding. I mean, my teachers donate and volunteer hundreds of hours a year. We'll see it tomorrow night. Most of the staff will be there. Most of the staff was there on Friday at graduation. It's very difficult to ask them to give up five days in their summer for no additional compensation.
And I'm not even talking about the teachers. I'm talking about if we can get a company to be able to come in and volunteer their time that has this kind of background, that we wouldn't have to, we would only be talking about building costs, that it could be done right beforehand where you have a volunteer group coming in to then providing that kind of service and no teachers would be necessary.
I would, I would, I mean, the building, it's open anyway, so it's not gonna cost us anything. If there's a company out there that you're aware of or anyone's aware of, I'd love to be emailed or called on that because I think that'd be great. And I think if we were able to push that during, during orientation and through our global connects and, you know, communicate that to the parents, I think you'd be surprised how many parents would be willing to have their students go for a few days beforehand. I think that we'd have a, a good crowd of, of incoming freshmen there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
You mentioned the teachers staying for forty minutes after, after on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Correct.
What, what is the focus of that time?
The goal is to be available for extra help. What happens, as I mentioned, there are multiple meetings going on. So some of the times the teachers are involved in parent meetings, but I would say eighty percent of the time, the teachers are there for extra help. And it's, it's great. There are so many schools that don't have that. We are very lucky to have that. And, you know, it's forty solid minutes that the kids can get in there. And I'd say the average student-to-teacher ratio at that point in time is three to four students for one teacher. So it's a great opportunity. It's free. We provide late buses on those days. And some of the kids do take advantage of it, but not enough.
No, no, it does, it does sound great. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, curriculum revision. As you're aware, the Common Core is in place and we need to revise some curriculum. We had a great department meeting. Jan came down, I think it was about a week and a half ago, and refreshed the department heads on the Rubicon Atlas program, which is a great program for mapping the curriculum, helping to write the curriculum. And I'm excited about the fact that on June twenty-second, department heads have, have an opportunity and most of them, I believe, are gonna take advantage of that to go through some training. Department heads are creating a proposal for summer curriculum work within their department with a few teachers. And that is gonna be happening in the next few weeks. And so there'll be work in the summer that's going on. And they'll also be using the district-approved template, which was something that NEASK was really adamant about, obviously. And that's something that we have in place and that the Rubicon Atlas is gonna be very helpful for our staff as well. And I know some of the elementary schools have already really embraced the Rubicon Atlas. And I know that eventually the high school will do that as well next year.
Scott, when do you expect to appoint the department heads?
We are, we will have that in place by the, sometime in June.
Right now, they're, they're technically vacant, correct?
Technically. But, well, they're, they're contracted until July first.
Oh, I see. So this is, this is post-July first.
Right.
I'm sorry.
We will have it all taken care of. I would expect to have that by the end of June. Dr. Vunovic is gonna be getting an email from me with some needs that I have. And then we'll have to probably do some impact bargaining on that, but we'll have that in place. Again, the summer curriculum work, and, and that's kind of why we have to have it in place, because it's gonna be work over the summer. So once July first, it's, we, we really need to have that in place. And the staff will be trained in late August. We'll look to use one of those in-service days to spend some time with the staff to make sure they're updated on where the curriculum stands. Obviously, the, the expectation is we're moving forward with the curriculum. I don't think the expectation is gonna be that everything is tied up and, and done in August. I think that's unrealistic. We will, in the fall, train the staff on the Rubicon Atlas. Hopefully, this will be done by department heads. Again, cost-effective. Whether it be through department meetings or whether it's done through early release, that's yet to be determined. But we're hoping that, that that can happen early so that the staff can use it throughout the year. And as I mentioned, the curriculum work will be continued through in-service, early release with full staff participation. And then hopefully we'll have that completed. The goal is by the end of the year. We'll see how that goes. One of the areas specifically in the Mass Tell and, and obviously in the NEASK is, and, and I'm really excited about this because we've already done this a couple of times this year. And comments in the evaluation were, this was some of the best professional development we had. And a lot of it was done in-house at no cost. So we want to provide a faculty-driven process to select some of the professional development. Obviously, we have to be realistic. We can't select all of it. There's some that are district initiatives that have to take place. But the staff was just excited to have two this year. And with NEASK and, with the roll-off in NEASK and dissecting the NEASK report, that was pretty good for us. And again, working in conjunction with the curriculum director and department heads to develop the professional development. And, you know, we're gonna look at this, hopefully a year from now, when we look at the staff surveys, we can get that improved in regards to professional development up to seventy-five percent. And I do feel that the, the reason why people were kind of burnt out, if you will, with the early release and the in-service was just that whole NEASK process. And I hate, I hate to keep going there, but it was pretty intensive and it took some time to get to where we are today. So we're excited about that. We're excited the fact that we have opportunities for professional development and that they're not already tied up in, in NEASK preparation. As we saw in the survey, parental communication was an issue. I think certainly our plan with freshmen is gonna be helpful, but I think it's important for us. One of our, I think our deficiencies is our website. We wanna, and, and that's more on the high school's part, not on the district's part. We need to use that website. I had a chance to look at the middle school's web, what they do, and, and we need to kind of join forces with what they're doing in regards to announcements, messages. We want to try and utilize every opportunity to communicate with parents and, and you know, I think we, before we mentioned, well, let's, you know, we'll email the surveys. That's just another option for us. So now we're looking at, how can we communicate to parents? We're gonna, website, we've got the message board now that's, that's working properly, that we've been putting messages on for almost a month now. Power School actually has a message alert that we're gonna utilize. This is when parents log in, there's a, a message that comes up automatically for the parent. So that's just another way to communicate. Although we use Global Connects, usually it's twice a month. We're gonna increase that and, and hopefully get some results there. In, in-house in regards to communication with the students, because this is parental communication, but also we want to look at some student communication. We are going to, instead of what we do now, is we do about a six-minute student-run television show. And what we want to try and do with, we've been working with Wayham Community Television, and Christian knows about this. And we're going to create a one-day-a-week show that's used during, viewed during advisory, that's gonna have all kinds of information for students. And then to get that to parents, Christian's gonna run that and loop that through WCTV so the parents can see it as well. So we're very excited about that. We've been working hard with Wayham Community Television. And we've gone, as I think I mentioned before, we've gone on some field trips to other schools. And we're really getting, we're getting some good ideas from what other schools are doing and we're incorporating that into our curriculum. The hope is, with the staffing, is to get the journalism class involved and do some video journalism, journalism classes that are gonna involve the students that are in the journalism club. And we're gonna get them to compete at, they have some competitions in regards to, I believe they call it the Mass Emmys. And so we're excited about that. And we're excited about the fact that we've joined, really, we've had some great collaboration with WCTV. They've come through with cameras, they've come through with instruction. And our goal is to have Christian work with all of our staff in, in any type of video venue that's needed by our staff. Continuing on with communication and
Excuse me, Scott.
Yes.
Just a quick note.
Sure.
I love the message board, but it's actually more up-to-date than the website for the calendar. So anything that can be done to improve the, the content of the website would be great.
Yeah, it's, the message board, we, sometimes we'll get a call if it's a day-old. The website, we don't get those kind of calls. But I do know that's an issue and that's something, again, it's on the improvement.
Scholarship night, for example, wasn't on the website.
Right. So we'll work, yeah, we definitely, that's something we need to work on. And we, and I know that's an issue. The, we're hoping through, hopefully the senior class can help us out. We're looking for two areas. And this is one area is an LED message board placed in the cafeteria with important messages. We try not to disrupt the classes during the day with messages. You know, especially in the spring, and I know Mr. Ranger was in here a few minutes ago, there are cancellations, there are changes. And we felt this would be a venue where we don't have to make that major announcement that the girls tennis match has been canceled, practice is in the gym. Now we can put it up there, we can have someone assigned to do that. And we're not disrupting the class at two oh nine when the, the teachers at that last point, they're maybe giving them their homework for the night. And all of a sudden, we come on and boom, here's your afternoon announcement. So we're really hoping to be able to utilize that. Most of the decisions that are made happen around eleven o'clock, which coincides with our first lunch. So we're hoping to have that LED message board in there. And also, we'll have general announcements that aren't as time-sensitive as cancellations and reschedules. We started something in June, so I, I kind of jumped on this. Again, trying to make sure that the staff, we have good communication. Everyone has a lot on their plate. And we started these Friday emails, which basically talk about, and actually, I guess we started that in late May. Basically, it's, it tells everyone what's going on the following week. There are so many things going on at a high school, as, as, as many of you know. And it's important that everyone knows exactly what's going on, because sometimes you may see someone once a week in the school, as far as the teachers, seeing one teacher down here, another teacher on the other end. And there may be something going on that's very positive in their classroom that they could go see after school. So by emailing the Friday notes, everyone knows what's going on and there's good communication. Because in a school with sixty-two point five teachers, you don't see everyone every day. And everyone gets a ton of emails. And so we try to make sure if we send an email, it's very important. We don't want teachers to be getting ten emails from administration a day. We try to minimize that as, as much as possible. Obviously, you knew this was gonna be on here, the NEASK concerns. We do have to address those. One is that we want to have a committee. And the committee would be a two-year follow-up committee. And we want to get that posted hopefully within the next few weeks to have people come in over the summer and address those concerns. As you're aware, we do have to address the concerns. In October of two thousand thirteen, we have to have a percentage of the concerns addressed. We want to conduct those meetings. And what we want to look at, and this could fall back and be an issue, but obviously, I think we have to look at the areas that we mentioned before that have minimal to no impact on, on the budget at this point in time. But at some point in time, we're gonna have to address those issues. But I'm hoping that the percentage that we need to take care of can be taken care of with a minimal cost. We're gonna look, we're gonna look at the highlighted areas specifically and try and address those. And I know we did a presentation and, and we gave the key of the, the green and the yellow areas. Those areas, we're gonna really try and work on. Some we've already done, happy to report that, but we've got a lot of work to do over the summer. Hopefully, the last part, I don't have to do. That's a substantive change. I'm really hoping that that, we can delete that and it doesn't have to be filled out. And that is for a, a change in staffing. So that's, that's the NEASK piece. Any questions on that? Okay, the last piece is the technology. We want to purchase new computers in a, this is gonna be in room one thirteen. And if you And if you, if you heard the, at graduation, the senior class has made a decision that if there, whatever money is left over, once they pay their bills and they're going to have to wait a while to make sure all the bills are in, they're going to help us out with this in room 113. Late August, maybe a little bit early, but we're hoping really to have that in place for the students when they come into September. And what we're going to do is we're going to relocate the computers that are in there that are working into two classrooms. One is room 128, which is a business classroom. One is room 113, one is the library. And hopefully increase the technology in there. So we'll take the good computers and relocate those computers in there. So we're excited. We're going to have printers in there, hopefully new monitors, keyboards, and obviously the new computers. So it's going to be hopefully a great room for teachers to sign out and utilize with their classes. Something that, with the technology that was in there, it didn't get utilized because it was hit or miss whether it was working or not. So unfortunately, a small percentage of teachers wouldn't even sign up for that because you create this great lesson plan and then you can't use it in the classroom. That's it.
Mike? Yeah, Rhonda?
The only thing that, the smart goal they had for that was update the only general computer lab in Wareham High School for all teachers to use. The only thing that I didn't see in, you know, the measures that I like to see for that one, I mean, I ask my questions all throughout, but just that, you know, how you're going to increase the student use of computers. I think that's really what the goal is for that. I mean, yeah, we're going to be moving things around and stuff like that, but you're trying to give greater access to our students when it comes to technology and I think that should be kind of-
Right. So what I'll do on the follow-up on that, that's a great point, is I have the printout of how many teachers utilized it this year. And what I can do is a year from now, compare that to the number of times it was used per period. And I think you'll be very happy with that number.
Okay, great. The only other thing is, it's just a general question of how, besides the NEASK's goal that you have, how much did the results from NEASK influence this school improvement plan for this year?
I think it greatly influenced it. I think that-
Across the board for all of the goals.
Right. By looking back, I think every area was an area of concern for NEASK or recommendation, as they put it.
Okay. There continues to be, I think, a lot of confusion on what we are accredited.
We are accredited.
Absolutely. And we need to keep saying that over and over and over again, that we are accredited.
Right.
But I think that there's still a lot of confusion out in the community about what it actually means of where we are and what it means if we do continue to not focus on improvements that need to be made. So I would just encourage, you know, as we go along, that we continue to not just let NEASK go away, but, you know, we're continuing to communicate about about what that accreditation means. I just think it's important because, you know, some of the things that I am hearing from the community is that middle school parents are basically saying, well, I'm not going to send my kid to a school if they're all of a sudden going to be in a position of not being accredited because that's going to affect their college. So there's, I think, concern out there that, and decisions might be made because they're thinking that the accreditation absolutely very, very important, but that what it means for their student long-term and they're making choices a lot earlier because of the announcement. So I think we need to get more information out there about it. Okay?
I agree. And you know, you don't want to say the sky is falling. There are a lot of schools that are in the same boat as us. And then again, as you mentioned, we do have accreditation. We've got some work to do and we're going to need some help with the resources because there are a lot of things, as you all saw from my presentation before, there are a lot of things that we can't fix unless we have money. We can push that off, kick the can down the road, but eventually we're going to, we're going to have to deal with it. I'm hoping that we can deal with a little bit each year so that in four years, all of a sudden, everything that has, has cost a lot of money is going to be, have to be dealt with. I hope that's not the case. I hope there's something that we can do and try and earmark a percentage each year with the help from the town. And I think the override is a, is a good step, a good first start. And we can, we can address a lot of those issues. The textbook issues, the technology issues could be addressed this year. And I think that's, that's a nice piece to take care of right off the bat. So trying, we're definitely trying to stay positive. The staff did a great job. As you all saw with this, there was a two-and-a-half years worth of work. And we are staying positive and we know that, you know, we saw Dr. Minovich and I went to a top-five dinner and he was trying to figure out what I was doing, but I was keeping score. Our kids are going to, the same schools are better than all the schools in the area. So our top kids are getting a phenomenal education despite some concerns that we have inside the building. But we're working hard. The staff's working hard. The students are working hard and we're moving forward.
The last comment that I'll make just has to do with capital improvements in general, whether it comes to technology or, or the school building. I just, I think maybe we should have a discussion here on whether that needs to continue to stay at the school level or because we have so many capital needs of our system is that, do we need to be able to pull that at a district level and make that part of the superintendent goals instead of, you know, just so, again, we need a capital plan for all of the schools. I just, it pains me to see every single school talking about basic needs of fixing a roof or so.
It comes out of the strategic plan because that is one of the goals of the strategic plan, therefore it translates to the school improvement plan.
Yeah. When do we get to attack that strategic plan again?
In a year.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Just, just a couple of comments in general. And if I, if I say some things that you don't agree with, please stop me and say you're full-blown. But you, you can get a lot of mileage out of advisory. And my perception now in talking to parents and students is that we're not getting a lot of mileage out of advisory. We should be doing a lot better on advisory. And in terms of dealing with freshman orientation, freshman attitudes, freshman culture, freshman readiness to learn, freshman becoming part of the school community, an awful lot of that could be directed through advisory. If we had a targeted, a targeted goal, let's say what our target is going to be, the ninth grade. Well, you target on the ninth grade and you target those ninth-grade advisory teachers about what, what, and it would, you know, what they should be doing in order to advance the goals and the academic, academic goals for our ninth graders. So again, not to belabor the point, but I don't think we're utilizing, this is just my opinion, of course, but this is based off what I hear. We're not using, we're not utilizing advisory to the capacity that we could because it really does give us a direct link to the kids in a different venue from just the classroom.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
I totally agree with you. It was funny because when we're starting to reflect now about this year, I think we took a huge step forward last year with advisory. And it's fair to say we didn't take as big a step this year. It's funny that you should bring that up because tomorrow I'm emailing Jan and we're trying to get the committee back together over the summer to really make sure that when the teachers come in, the students come in, there's an understanding of what the curriculum is. Due to no one's fault, we weren't able to have that set up over the summer this past year. But I agree with your assessment on advisory and I also agree, it's a great venue to dovetail with what we're trying to do with the freshmen. I don't think it's going to solve the problem that we have with freshmen, but I think they can work hand-in-hand with our initiative.
Right. And another thing too is, and I don't know, there's all kinds of problems with this, but, and I'm not saying that what we did down at Sandwich is the best, but we did have an extensive freshman orientation program over three days. We brought the freshmen in. The freshmen go to school 183 days. They got brought in three days early. And there was a YMCA camp down there, I forgot the name of it, but there was a lot of outdoor rope climbing, wall climbing. And the counselors were still on duty in August and September.
Camp Burgess, I believe.
That's what it is, Camp Burgess. And we utilized that for part of the program. The other part of the program was that over those three nights, you know, we had a skeleton crew at the school and every single solitary freshman had to come with their parents signed off on a contract before they even got a locker. They didn't get a locker assigned if we didn't have a sign off from the parents. So there are all kinds of little creative things that you can do in terms of establishing, establishing the atmosphere early on to the freshmen that, hey, this is no longer fun and games. This is serious and this is what we expect from you. And there is a, you know, there's a whole idea of togetherness and coming together because down at Sandwich, we had, we had a little bit of a, more of a problem than you do here because our freshman class was coming from three schools.
Sure.
So we had three KDA's. But anyways, there are some things to do and there are some, some really creative ways to get the freshmen to meld into a class. In terms of the, the other thing about, I'm focusing on the freshman because that kind of bothers me, is the whole idea of going to the deans, whereas that the deans, that freshman dean would be in a position to work hand-in-hand with the guidance counselors in coming up with creative curriculum in terms of socializing the freshman class and also directing them academically to what their expectations are, the, you know, homework, the portfolio, whatever the case may be. So I think that as the dean system progresses, there is going to be, because the deans are still by class, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, you know, there are going to be those activities that are germane to the freshman class, the sophomore class, AKA MCAS.
Sure.
So I think every dean is going to have their little niche of the school culture that they can zero in on. And certainly, they should be working hand-in-hand with the guidance department. So I think that's another, that's another element of capacity that we can tap into that we probably have not been doing. So I think that, you know, there are some creative ways that we can zero in on the freshmen. We could, we could have a freshman day because if every, if every staff person in that school, every professional staff person in that school, you know, counseled twenty-five kids, twenty-five freshmen, you could counsel every single solitary freshman if you wanted to on maybe a PD day. PD is another thing I wanted to talk about, is PD for teachers. Again, you can be creative on this. And I think that the best professional development you can have is infused professional development internally. And I strongly suggest that you take one of those schools, school improvement goals, right? Take one of them and concentrate on that one goal as this is what we're going to do in PD this year and nothing else. This is going to be the focus of our PD. Because having, you know, having a smorgasbord of PD is all well and good, but if it's not focused, it's what it is. It's a smorgasbord. And you're not going to get that much out of it. So I think that you're on the white, you're on the right track. I think you've identified, you've been very intuitive in terms of identifying what the problems are and possible solutions. I admire some of the creative solutions you come up with and if there's anything I can do to help, please don't hesitate.
Definitely interested in finding out, you know, how that program was funded down at Sandwich, if we can at some point in time communicate via email. I think that's outstanding.
No, call me.
I will. That's right. I'm sorry, I forgot. We did bring a group of students down there, so I know the facility you're talking about and it'd be a great venue. I know it was very pricey when I brought the kids down there, so I'm looking forward to that conversation. Thank you.
I think we're all set, Scott. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Larranger?
Appreciate it.
Come on down. Goodbye, minute.
Thank you, folks.
It's the Village PTA.
Yes, it's the Village PTA, that's right.
You ready, brother? Before we get started, if I, if I could, I just want to thank Mark for a great first year. We had, I think we had a tremendous year in the field of athletics and he's done a great job with the phys ed and health staff. So I want to just publicly thank you for a great first year and I definitely look forward to the second year and look forward to the future.
Thank you.
Could be a mock chair back there.
It was Christian.
That was not a mock chair. It was a sincere chair.
I also want to, I, I-
One second, please.
No, I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, that Scott, it's less than a year and he's got hockey on the, on the agenda tonight. Less than a year. I thought that you were going to be a little bit more tough.
You know, you know-
I mean, wrestling, not hockey, sorry, wrestling. Sorry about that.
She had the wrong sport. I knew what she meant.
Well, when you show me that could make some money, I was willing to listen.
Go ahead.
I also want to thank Scott and everybody in Wareham for, for my first year here. It's, you know, really, it was a difficult year, to be honest with you, because I learned a lot. I didn't, you know, this is the first time I've ever been an athletic director and I coached three sports and I kidded with my wife and say, you know, time-wise, it's not that much difference because when you're the head coach of three sports, you're always out coaching and doing things. So being an athletic director, the time is not, not the issue at all. But you couldn't do the things that we want to do without the support of the administration and Scott and what he's done. And I just, you know, as you look at the budget and things that he's fighting with to go through, it's amazing what is able to get done in that school with what kind of funding and things that he has. And it's, you know, it makes me happy to go to work every day knowing that there's so many people working hard to get things done, you know. And I think every, every proposal I've came to Scott and Debbie with about, you know, a captain's lunch and things like that, it's all been welcomed. It's all, nothing's been held back. It made sense. They welcomed it. So we've been able to provide some things for the kids here in Wareham. I think they're a little bit special and that's what we're trying to do. Just try to give a little back to some of the athletes and all the time they put in for our school and do some special things for them. So. So it was a fun year. It was an interesting year and I'm definitely looking forward to next year, without a doubt, looking forward to next year. My, my spring athletic report, the budget, the numbers are there. We ran our total expenses of eighty-five thousand, two-hundred and three dollars and sixty-four cents. And those supplies include annual bills, transportation, salaries, so on and so forth. Our users fees revenue was ten thousand, nine-hundred and fifty.
I'm sorry.
Total users fees throughout the seven sports that we had.
Which report are you looking at? We have three.
Spring.
The spring annual report?
The spring with transportation or the spring report total sheet?
The spring total sheet.
Thank you.
Yeah, the fancy cover one? I don't know if you got that fancy cover.
I didn't get a fancy cover one.
All right, and then I'm reading through the athletic report.
This, right?
In the first page.
Yes.
That's right. Yeah.
Mark? Feel free to highlight. You don't need to read.
Okay. Some of the things that we continue to do with the community service projects with our, with our programs and every single program that we had throughout the year completed a, a community service of some sort for the town of Wareham. And you can read what they're doing there. Track team's doing the Relay for Life, softball volunteered opening day. One of my goals for next year is, and it's kind of a community service type of thing, one of my goals for next year is to every program to have some kind of youth night. We call it a youth night or a youth day or where we invite anyone that's interested, any, any age kid in Wareham that's interested in a particular sport that we have a youth night. Basketball, it's very hand-in-hand because the town of kids playing basketball in the community. Softball, baseball, and we invite them there. And basketball, we might play a game at halftime for a few minutes. Or baseball, we might allow to go out there and hit ground balls to each other. Something to bring them on there because I think when you're a kid and you get to go on the floor or you get to go on the field or on the courts of where you're potentially going to be going to high school, it burns. It makes you want to be there. It makes you want to be part of it. So we're going to ask each program next year to have some kind of youth night that we're going to bring kids into our, into our facilities and kind of show it off a little bit. If you went to the tournament game today, the, our facility, our baseball facility is incredible. And I could hear the Middleborough people saying, oh my God, it must be a joy to play on this field. And I thought, wow, how about a fifth, sixth grader playing on that field, how excited they would be. They would, they would think every day about coming to Wareham and playing baseball for that, for that school. So, so we're going to, on those lines, try to get in there. Congratulations to our baseball team finishing fourteen and six and going to the state tournament, hosting two home games, which is a lot of fun. We again listed our, some of our supportive things that happened in the spring. Aliyah Ali broke the school record in the 200 meters and tied it in the 100 meters, qualified for the states in three different events. Caitlin Berger, Emily Cummins also qualified for states. And our four-by-one relay team in Madison-St. Julian, Aliyah Ali, Nicole Johnson and Stephanie Borges qualified as a team. Boys track, Johnny Irvin, Evan Moretti qualified for states. Our color guard team won the state title second year in a row. And in girls softball, I thought that was a nice thing to put down. We added a freshman program in girls softball, which is really nice. Anytime you can add more athletes to your team where you can field three teams, particularly with a school with less than eight hundred kids in it, I think that's doing a really good job.
And we, we, we didn't add a team. We didn't have a freshman baseball team. The freshman baseball team that we had the funding for then went to the freshman softball team.
That's great anticipation.
I know.
Both our tennis teams were SCC Team Sportsmanship Award winners, which was a nice touch. Congratulations, Jeff. Jeff. Throughout the fall, winter, and spring seasons, we increased by over fifteen percent of our athletes. That's that finished the teams. We, our cut rate or quit rate on our teams this, this, this year was outstanding. I mean, I came from a different school, I saw it in different schools, and not, once kids signed up to play a sport, the majority of them stayed, which in my eyes is coaches doing a good job, because if kids want to be there, they're doing a good job. So that was very impressive. And then some of the new programs instituted, I, I, you know, this is things that we've done throughout the year, meet the coaches night, I've already gone over that in my previous meetings. We did hold a senior athletic awards night with a catered dinner that I thought went very well, and, and any senior athlete that had played a sport this year, we had dinner for them, and then we went to the auditorium and gave out awards. Once proud again of South Coast Conference All-Stars Honorable Mentions and Sportsmanship Award winners listed below. In, in the spring in softball, Tara Diaghi-Tamasso, I have a tough time with that name. If you went to the banquet, I think I had to say that name thirty times, she did so many good things. Volleyball, Quentin Silvareo's an All-Star. Baseball, Sean Conway, Billy Peterson, Ian Searls. Girls track, Aliyah Ali and Caitlin Berger. And in girls tennis, Rachel Bonfiglio. Honorable mentions in softball, Brianna Muir, Stacy Krosick. Volleyball, Tim Regan, Marcel Merritt. Baseball, Brandon Heel. Girls track, Emily Cummings, Paige Feskins. Boys track, Johnny Irvin, Evan Moretti. And in girls tennis, Carly Briggs. And then our sportsmanship award winners. Each, each program has one sportsmanship winners, and they are listed there as follows. Spring sports captains I listed, and I think that's important to show leadership. There's a ton of two, three sport captains at Wareham High School, so I listed them as, and, you know, again, I think if kids are staying on teams, coaches are doing a good job, and so aren't captains and leaders, because the young kids are feeling comfortable in the locker rooms. And that's one thing we talked about at our captain's breakfast, is that we want our freshmen taken care of. We don't want the freshmen walking in there, they're nervous enough. We want leadership where the older kids are taking them under their wing, welcoming them to the program and taking good care of them. And, and I'm a big proponent in telling our coaches that don't have your freshmen taking out the water, don't have your, have your older kids doing that. They have your older kids lead by example of taking out waters and cleaning locker rooms up and things like that. It's not a freshman job, it's, it's a leadership job. So. And then at the end of the year, we all met as coaches and with myself to work on some goals and, and developing programs and things like that, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute.
Mark, we, as you all know, we increased the requirement to participate in regards to number of classes students had to pass. Can you touch on how many kids were academically ineligible for spring sports?
None. Yeah, we had, we didn't have not one. Throughout our signups, what we had sign up for spring sports, when I did the grade checks, we did not have one athlete that was academic, I should have put that in the report, that's good, that was not academically eligible, which is outstanding. Not one. So every kid had passed six classes or better and could play the sport they signed up for. So that's definitely moving in the right direction.
I'm pretty confident you knew the answer to that when you asked it.
Stunt me for a minute. Give him a little ground ball there, use his sports analogy. I was very excited about that, as you can tell.
Yeah, that was awesome.
We increased the requirement by two more classes, and to have that, I couldn't believe it when I said, go back and double check it. He triple checked it just to make sure, and there was not one student, athlete that had to be removed from the team for eligibility. So we, obviously you raised the bar and the kids will meet it.
You have to understand, the MIAA is absolutely believes there's data to support that playing a sport increases academic performance.
Absolutely, absolutely, without a doubt. Because, and when our kids, we, I am tracking it right now, some of our winter kids that did not go out for a spring sport, their grades went downhill, big time, according to what they had done while, while they were with a coach playing a sport, their grades were higher than when they were not. Because when a kid's busy, they'll do their work, more so than when a kid's not busy. They go home and, and they don't do anything. They, when they're with a coach and doing grade checks, their academics are, are better. So that's, that's the biggest thing about playing sports and being part of something, that, that you stay focused, and that's the key. So you're absolutely right, Jeff.
I think it's routines and time management.
Yep, yep. Our athletic report by our numbers is there. I won't read it all through to you, but that's what we spent on, on, on salaries and things that we did throughout the program. No gate receipts, because we do not have any gate for spring sports, and our users fees are there and our totals are down the bottom. If you turn the page, it's broken down by sport. One of the things I want to clearly state that, of course, it's going to take time in, in developing programs and things like that, but some of the records and things of the teams, I, I know winning isn't everything, but if you play me in checkers and I lose, I'm going to play you again and again and again and again until I beat you. So it's bothersome to me that, you know, we have some programs that, that, you know, we're in the, we're in last place in the SCC in a lot of programs, and, and mark my words, it's going to be different in the next few years. Things are going to get better. It's just, it's going to take time, but things are going to get better. And when I met with my coaches, every one of them is in agreement in how, what type of, some of the things we need to do to get better as a program. And, and our coaches are working hard, and I, and I think we're going to head in the right direction, it's just going to take time. Baseball had an excellent year, wins-loss record wise, and the other programs, you know, it, it's going to take time to develop programs, is all I'm going to say, and, and we will develop programs here, wins and losses. Our expense piece there is by sport, and you could see that, you know, some sports are more expensive to run than others. All in all, the spring is the least expensive sport to run, the least expensive season to run throughout the, throughout the three seasons. Most expensive being fall, because of, there's an extra sport. Well, actually, winter's pretty tough, too, with hockey. Any questions? Are we a million, right?
Mike?
No, not yet, thank you.
Not yet? Would you like me to come back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Cliff?
Yeah. Glad to see that girls softball was the second-leading sport.
Yes, yes. Cliff, it's, you're going to see, they're all going to have winning records in three or four years.
Well, they didn't have a winning record.
Well, they, they-
No, I, I think that the report is, is very good, it's very complimentary. I, I think you've highlighted some of your accomplishments. I had the pleasure of going to the awards night, and I thought of all of the things, in my opinion, that you've brought to, to Wareham, that was one of the best. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
The kids seemed to have a good time. You know, it was nice to advocate it, and then it was really good, the slideshow that went along with every kid, that was awesome. They gave it a nice personal touch. Job well done. That was very, very impressive. So I really enjoyed that. That was, that was fun to go to.
Thank you. And that was catered by cost for the breakfast nook down there on, is it Cranberry Highway, Scott? On Cranberry Highway donated that food for whatever it cost them, is what we paid, which is outstanding. So, you know, I can't thank them enough for that. They were, you know, I, I told the kids during the banquet that if, you know, if you're going to go out for breakfast, go and support them, because they, they stepped up big, and they served the food and gave us the whole night, you know, and, and the preparation before that. So, you know, it was a really nice thing by-
No, I enjoyed it.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah. Thank you. I, I was just double checking something to make sure that my copy didn't get cut off, but I see there's a column for Team GPA, and there's nothing listed.
Yeah, the, the GPAs aren't finished until the end of the school, school year, so I couldn't tally it together. The semester, two grades aren't, aren't technically over until school gets over. So-
Okay. So, so it'll be updated at then?
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think we've said this a couple times in your reports, but it would be great, whenever we're able to see spring or fall or whatever the results are even the end of the year, being able to see the year over year, being able to see the difference from last year to this year. So if we can just make a note for, you know, for the, the future ones, that it definitely includes at least last year, I'd love it to be able to go back a couple years, but even if it's last year, comparing last year to this year, in each one of the categories and each one of the reports, I think that would be hugely beneficial, not only to us, but also to you, as we start charting the progress of, of what you're making.
And within my second year, now that I have all the records for last year, my records, that'll be definitely on the report for the fall.
Gotcha.
Because it's all right in front of me now, so.
Great.
It was, it's tough to look back sometimes and go back in our programs, and, and actually my computer is gone. So I lost a lot of, my computer died. So I lost a lot of my last year's results and things like that, that Tina had saved. The computer's gone. So some of it's on my thumb drive, but a lot of it is not.
Scott just got three-year-old computers. He wouldn't give you one?
Well, they, they would disperse before he had the water leak in his, in his office. That's a whole nother issue, I won't go there. But it all, it all fell, unfortunately.
Insurance claim.
Yeah, it was just his office. The deductible is too high for one office.
All right. Thank you. The other question that I had was, I think it's great that you implemented a, you know, meet with the coaches at the end to talk about raising academic GPAs. Did you think to include either the deans or, you know, basically from the, the academic side, that's responsible for the academic side in the school, being able to add them to that meeting? So then basically it's a joint meeting between the coaches and also the deans, talking collectively about what can be done to increase those scores. The last thing that I'll say is that, you know, the enthusiasm and passion and the dedication that you have, we are very, very lucky to have you in the school system, so I'm impressed first and foremost by that. But even more importantly than that, and in this first year, the results that you, you've already been able to show. So, you know, just keep up your dedication to this district, and then, you know, I absolutely see, like you're saying, that the results are only going to increase year after year. So thank you for all your work and for your first year.
Thank you.
I am very lucky that I get to work with Mark more than anybody other, more than any other committee member. But I can agree with my colleagues that we're lucky to have you, and you've had a great first year, and I enjoy working you, with you both as a committee member and as a coach.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's all you have to say?
I, that's-
This is the first time that he hasn't talked about per student or per boss.
Let's move on, let's move on.
The truth is, I calculated those things, and I didn't think they were worthy of note, because I know Mark has other initiatives.
Nice job.
And I trust him to be working on them. Mark, go ahead.
Go to the waivers?
Yes.
Okay. We have, we applied again for eighth-grade waivers. There are two goals in applying for eighth-grade waivers. One is developmental programs, you get an extra year of, of, of an athlete participating in your program. The second thing is to increase the numbers. So we applied with seven for seven now. We got denied one, but I went, I went back, and, and like I said, when I-
He wrestled them and won.
They said when they said no to me for girls tennis, I guess they said they have never had somebody just sit there and stare at them after they had denied me. I just sat there and I just stared at them like this. And they said that, they knew they were going to hear from me. Because we, when you shut the door, I said, this guy's not done. So we went back and ended up getting the waiver. But the, the eighth-grade waivers that have been approved by the MIAA through District D is boys and girls cross-country. That's today's seventh graders that are incoming, eighth graders for next year can run cross-country. We have field hockey got approved, and golf got approved. So we're excited about it, and in the winter, I already have my ideas of where we're going to go from there. We're not going, we're not applying for waivers for, for teams or programs that have good numbers and/or have good feeder systems. A, a sport like tennis, a sport like golf, a sport like, they don't have youth programs. So track, we went and had, and got a waiver for, there's no youth program for those, those particular teams, and we don't have a middle school program for them. So to try to build numbers and develop programs, we got approved through those four. And, and we're here to see if the school committee would accept those four programs as eighth-grade waivers.
So that was cross-country?
Boys and girls cross-country, golf, and field hockey.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
And will we approve?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain, four zero zero.
Thank you. Awesome. And the last bit of business is, is we, we are partnering with Carver. And, and Carver has very low wrestling numbers, and we are projecting lower hockey numbers due to our graduation rate. The hockey team has graduated eleven and nine the year before, or something like that, in the past two years of seniors. And that's not a sport that you can just go in the hallway and find a kid to play hockey. They've got to be playing when they're younger and skating. And, and our, our sixth, seventh grade group is very high in numbers, but we're very concerned on a lull with hockey. So we, we are partnering or proposing that we partnership with Wareham, Wareham-Carver, to co-op in, in boys hockey and add a program, which is, you know, one to my heart, is, is adding wrestling. Scott's going to start kicking me under the table here, but in wrestling, what we did is I put the proposal in how we're going to do it. It's, it's better than cost neutral. Scott had said to me that if you want to get wrestling in Wareham, it can't, it, it's got to be cost neutral. It cannot cost money. So what we did, we worked out with Carver, I met with the Carver Athletic Director, and if you approve the co-op between Carver-Wareham wrestling, Carver pays for all the buses for the wrestling team, including practice shuttles. We are going to practice probably three days at Wareham, one day at Carver. When we practice at Carver, Carver would pay for the shuttles for the Wareham students back to, to Wareham, I mean, to Carver for practice. Wareham keeps the users fees. So if we have thirty kids go out for wrestling at Wareham, we keep the users fees. The users fees goes into the Wareham athletic account, and Carver wrestlers as well. The Carver donates the mats, which is about a $10,000 value. Carver has-
Did you, did you wrestle the Carver AD for this?
No, he wants to keep his program. He, he really does. Like, he, like-
Everything you said sounded like you must have, you know-
He's actually a Plymouth guy, but-
Go ahead.
We are, they're going to donate, not donate, let us use a mat. They have two mats. So they're going to bring a mat, which we can also use for cheerleading. When they, when they toss, I mean, I sometimes cringe at seeing the girls get thrown up and then we get this little blue mat underneath them. This is going to be a, a thick wrestling mat that the cheerleaders can use as well. They're going to let us keep that on our campus, the Carver mat, until we can gain money to, to, to buy our own. And Wareham keeps all the money that is earned for wrestling quads and duels. So if you have a wrestling quad at, at your school, that's four teams that come in, and we set up some kind of snack bar of some sort, not going to charge admission, but some kind of snack bar and, and Carver, I mean, Wareham keeps all that proceeds as well, too. So we're figuring it could be as much as, you know, $4,000 that we could add to our, to our budget and start a new sport at Wareham, which is, is a perfect world, perfect world. Carver, Carver hires the coaches too.
I'm just trying to understand, how does the competition work? Because it's obviously not an SCC program, correct?
Yep. It's, there's a, there's a league out there now that's combined with Middleborough's in it. There's about nine schools. It's, it's a Division III South Wrestling League, and there's about nine schools, we're going to enter that league. It's called the Bayshore, I believe. No, not the Bayshore, the, excuse me?
Is sandwich in that league?
Nope, sandwich is in the Atlantic Coast League.
So they have wrestling?
Yes, yeah.
And they're all cooperative?
What's that?
They're all cooperative?
No.
This is the only cooperative?
Us and one other team, and I, I don't know, it's a, it's a Cape-
So if a match occurs, the winner is Wareham-Carver?
Yes. Wareham-Carver, yep. And what we're going to do to save money for the first year is we'll wear Carver uniforms with a Wareham type of emblem on them, and in hockey, we'll wear the Wareham uniforms with a Carver emblem on them.
And how does the MIAA connect with this? Do they?
Do they? Well, they have to prove it, but-
Do they recognize the results?
Yes.
So how is it different than us having, having our own team?
Well, the, the main thing, the main reason why we wanted to co-op with Carver is because it's, it's not going to cost us a dime, we're going to gain money from it. And where we're struggling, I, there isn't, it would probably cost us about, I think I got it valued down at $11,000 to start a program. That's, that's, that's not to start it, that's a program that's in, that's in, that's on its feet. To start a program with mats and things, you're looking at about $25,000.
Do it, are there any wrestling programs in the SCC?
DR just started one. Dayton-Rohrwood just started one.
Are they going, are we competing with them?
Yes. I haven't done our schedule yet, I haven't looked at any of it yet, but, but that will be the one league, the one, they're not in that league that we're trying to get into, but that, that will be the one team that in the South Coast Conference has wrestling.
So wrestling, generally speaking, is somewhat embryonic, certainly in the South?
South, South Coast does not have it, that's correct.
South of Plymouth, anyway.
Yeah. So, really, and, you know, my friends were laughing when I said I was, you know, wanting to go to Wareham and be an athletic, and they said, no one wrestles in the entire conference, you're going to go nuts.
Okay, tell us about hockey now.
Hockey is- Hockey is, um, hockey estimated cost is twenty-four thousand to, to, to run hockey. Carver has, uh, seven hockey players, I believe, around seven hockey players. They were co-op'd with, with Sacred Heart and that dropped. Sacred Heart dropped, so now those kids aren't playing anywhere. So, we were going to co-op the hockey and bring those, uh, Carver kids into Wareham and let, let them play hockey with us. It's kind of like a good friendship type deal.
And the financial impact of that decision?
The financial impact is, um, Carver, Carver, uh, Wareham keeps users fees for, for, for wrestling and, and, and Wareham hockey, but the Carver, the Carver is going to fund, uh, we're going to fund the hockey and Carver keeps their hockey players' users fees. That's the only difference. But it's already in our budget, so we're, we're going to, we're going to still fund it. Whoever signs up to play hockey for, for Carver through the co-op, they get to keep their users fees. So, they can buy tapes and tape and some of the supplies they might need to get through the year.
Still sounds like from a Wareham perspective, the cost per participant is going to be exceedingly high.
For hockey?
Yes.
Yes. Hockey will always be exceedingly high. Ice time, rentals, there's nothing you can do about it. I, it's always going to be a high, high cost sport.
Well, there is one thing we can do about it, but I'm not going to talk about it at this point.
Yeah, we, I know your thought, but no, I know.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can add a program, strengthen maybe another program and, you know, and, and, and get, you know, I, I personally, I mean, I, you know, I, if a kid's in Carver and, and wants to play hockey and there's a way for them to play hockey, then, then, then that's awesome. You know, I, I mean, I, I don't care where you live, if you, I mean, I, I think it would be a really good thing. I think that the best of both worlds for, for both schools.
Questions?
Mr. Chair, before we take questions, we need to go, uh, make a motion to go past the hour of ten, the, to finish the agenda.
Yes, I'll take that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I, I think it will be not far past because we only really have a small number of administrative things to tackle after this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you. Questions?
Yes. Is it, is this the sort of thing that's going to have to be, you know, re-voted on every year or?
Yes, it is. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's an every year, every year, um, application applied in the MIAA for, for. So, let's say we run it, and that's a good question actually, and we end up having fifty kids come out for Wareham to wrestle, then it probably will not be approved the following year. It'll probably, they, they will say Wareham has to split and become, you know, maybe at that point, we can help Carver get their numbers up too, so they don't drop their program.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Cliff?
So, this is the winter season?
Yes.
So, uh, we already have hockey, we're going to run hockey, but your, your, your conclusion is that we're not going to have, uh, as many kids out for hockey as we've had in the past? Is that?
Yes.
Do you know that for a fact? Have we had signups already or is this just a educated guess?
It's an educated guess, but hockey's one of the sports you can educate, you, you can take an educated guess on according to who's coming up from the eighth grade to play as freshman and who you lost and.
And there'd be no, uh, financial commitment for salaries or anything like that, right?
Nothing.
Okay.
Well, hockey, it's in our budget. For hockey, yeah, but not for wrestling.
Right. Here's my only problem with the whole thing, um, is timing. And I know how badly you want to get a wrestling program here. But perception is reality. And we just laid off twenty-one teachers. We've cut programs. We've got class size of, at the elementary level hovering for thirty kids. And now we're going to add a sport.
Adding a sport and four thousand dollars into the, into the budget too. Like we're adding, we're adding, we're offering another sport for Wareham students and we're gaining money from it. And a mat that's worth, you know, ten thousand that they're going to donate. I mean, that's.
He doesn't quit, does he?
Right?
Like you say, it's supplementing some of the other sports.
I, I understand the concern and those are my concerns as well. And I said, don't go, you're not going in front of the school committee unless you can show them something in the positive as far as revenue. And, and I think.
But again, it's about perception is reality. I know we've got real good press here and I know the press is feared that's here. But the, the perception is reality. I mean, we're, we're cutting programs, we're looking for overrides, we're pleading poverty and we're going to add a program.
Yeah, and four thousand dollars.
And a mat.
But in a time, in a time when, when we're, we're competing with other schools, to be able to offer another program at no cost and there's the positive outcome, um, it, there's a lot of competition at the secondary level to keep kids in town. And this is just another way for us to have something positive going on.
Okay, I'm done. Rhonda?
Have you talked to the, um, hockey students that are going to definitely be hockey players next year?
About the co-op?
Yes.
No. No, I, if I had brief, has it been rumbling around the school? A little bit, a little bit. And if a kid asks me about it, yeah, I'd say it's a possibility. But I have not pulled them in until it's been approved and then we, then we go from there.
What are you hearing back? I mean, generally positive or basically, I don't want to have to share our program with another town. I want to be able to be Wareham pride and, and be Wareham hockey team.
I have heard no negative. I haven't heard, I, I would say, you know, it's kind of like, really? I, I haven't heard any negative about it, about the Wareham hockey players saying. I think if, if it gets to the point where possibly we couldn't field the team, then they would certainly, whatever it takes to keep it going. And if that's bringing Wareham kids in, there's extra seven to ten kids, well, I think they got seven definite, but maybe they have a few eighth graders coming up, I'm not sure about that. So, let's say they bring ten athletes onto our team, then that, that's good because we keep our program, maybe play a little JV games and some of those kids that wouldn't play a lot because we don't have a JV program right now can possibly get on the ice more.
Well, I mean, there's, there's two issues that I have and I understand. I mean, being able to get a sport in here and get some extra money into the district, that's a win-win. The concern that I have has to do with, uh, you know, that if we were in a situation where the hockey team, um, was on the chopping block, which yes, sports in general, and we have a lot of hard decisions that we have to make, but, you know, but we haven't talked specifically about hockey being on the chopping block. So, one concern is, is that, you know, again, the, the reason why we're doing it is because to be able to gain another sport. And I know that's not the only reason, but I mean, that, that's kind of like what we're talking about here. The second one is that we have seven kids and, you know, hopefully seven good kids coming over from Carver, but is that going to prevent, uh, quality Wareham, um, kid from playing hockey? I mean, I know we don't have thirty kids, but you know what I mean? Like I just, I would, I would hate to all of a sudden have a, a Carver kid take the place of, uh, of a Wareham student that would like to play hockey here.
That's, that's a good question, but it, there's no cut policy. We will not cut athletes. Uh, any, anyone that comes up with hockey, we'll, we'll find a place for them to play. We, we, right now, we only have a varsity program, so.
Right.
So, you know, we, if we get a lot of athletes that come out, then we'll create a junior varsity program and the kids that are on the varsity don't play a lot, we'll be able to play a ton at the JV level. So, it's a win-win for them too.
Right. But it, going back to that, I'll use Cliff's perception is reality, that, um, if there's a perception from Wareham parents that Carver kids are playing over theirs, you know what I mean? These are kids that have been on the program for a while and things like that. I think we just need to think about that a little bit if we're going to basically combine the program, that we have to think about the kids and the parents that have basically been invested in hockey and, and dreamed of playing for Wareham hockey, you know, since they were in the Wareham youth program. That is gaining momentum also. The youth, the youth program for Wareham, um, is gaining momentum with the grants that they got to be able to go to Tabor and bring in all new kids. My, my son's five, so sorry, he's not going to play hockey yet, but, you know, he got involved in that.
He might wrestle by the time he gets here.
He's actually good at that. But, um, but that, that's, that's where my concerns are, um, and, you know, I'm glad that it's a yearly thing, that we can take a look at it next, next year. So, I'll continue to hear some of the arguments, so I'm not one hundred percent against it, but I just want to make sure that we're preserving Wareham sports, um, and, you know, the kids that have committed to it.
One thing you have to keep in mind is that there is a possibility that we will not have enough players to play hockey this year. And that, that's what, when we was talking to Carver, the wrestling idea was on the table and, and I knew wrestling had low, I know they had low numbers in wrestling and, and we, we, Scott and I at the end of the year, looked at our numbers in hockey and said, oh my God, we are at a, like if just the kids returning, there are a couple of kids that are not going to play, they're going to play at other levels, just the kids that are returning from Wareham right now, we cannot field a team. We can't, we could, we would not be able to put enough kids on the ice.
What is that number?
What's that?
What is that number?
Exactly?
That are returning.
Twelve, was it?
I, I believe it's even less than twelve and, and the.
Twelve including the two kids we're hearing rumors are not going to play. So, you're looking at, and I think there's, we don't know how many eighth graders are coming in because we don't know what school they're going to, some may go to Upper Cape, some, so we're not sure on that, that, that'd be a guess. But it's low. It's concerningly low.
But I, I don't see this as a long-term situation. The numbers in, uh, sixth and seventh grade combined are, are over thirty. So, this is a short-term fix for a bubble that's at the middle school level. It's, I, I wouldn't imagine.
And it would keep hockey going in our community, regardless of what, I mean, it would definitely keep hockey going in our community. And then the, for like, like you would ask the following year if, if the numbers are better, they won't approve it anyways. It would be a, it would be a good, it would be just a, a stepping stone into, into, when that, when those old seventh, eighth graders, are they sixth, seventh? I know there's good numbers down there. When those kids come up and play at that point, it'd probably be no longer a co-op.
But then we would have to figure out how to fund it.
What's that?
We would figure out, we would need to figure out how to fund it because we no longer have that co-op where we're earning the four thousand dollars because we're splitting the program back now. So, we would have to find our own coaches and.
No, that's just wrestling. The, the, the funding for hockey is staying in our budget as is. Yeah. So, it, there would be no change in the funding at all for hockey. We just, we just split back.
I didn't know if it was a combined deal where, you know.
Nope. That's just the wrestling end of it.
Wrestling if you do hockey also.
No, that's just the wrestling end of it.
Thank you.
I was smart when I.
To Rhonda's point though, um, apply that to wrestling, would we lose wrestling if they bowed out?
If we didn't have mat and couldn't fund it, yes. Yes.
And that's just, that would just be a reality, I mean.
Yeah, but I have a plan that i- if I can get a couple of years with the co-op, that Carver's numbers are going to increase enough where they can split and become Carver High School Wrestling again and Wareham will have enough numbers and a mat to be able to split. I have a lot of friends in the, in the wrestling community that are, that are, that are going to help me fundraise for mats. So.
You all set? Want me to come back to you?
Yeah, I think.
Cliff?
Yeah, I had a couple, a couple of questions I had written down that I forgot to ask. The first is, has this been run by the Carver School Committee?
I don't think it has, no.
Okay.
But I'm not positive, I don't think it has.
See, and then the other thing, um, I had in my, I had written down before you talked about the twelve kids. I'm not convinced that we're in a position to afford hockey to begin with. I'm really not. I, I'm not convinced that twelve, I'm not convinced that we were in a position, forget the co, forget the, the co-op, that we're in a position to afford hockey anyways. I, I don't know where we're going down the road. I don't know where these overrides are going. I don't know what our budget situation is going to be. I do know what hockey costs. So, um, and then when you tell me there's twelve kids and we can't, we couldn't possibly field a hockey program, then to me, that makes my, that makes my decision easy.
Well, there's twelve and there's whatever comes in as eighth graders. But twelve's my guesstimate, I, I could, I could get back to you on the exact number, but.
Again, it makes, it makes, it makes, it clarifies it in my own head as to the budget implications of our, the total budget implications of our school system.
I look at it, if you're going to crush twelve kids if you cut this.
Well, you know what? You're going to crush, we've been crushing a lot more than twelve kids.
Yeah.
We're crushing a lot more than twelve kids.
We can make it work though.
Yeah. But no, we're crushing a lot more than twelve kids. We're crushing a lot of kids at the elementary level when you've got thirty in a classroom.
I, I get you, believe me.
Go ahead.
Mike, want me to come back to you?
Uh, no, I, I, I'll go.
That's what I mean, no.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I started off really excited to hear this and, and I've been persuaded a bit by Dr. Sylvia and, and the, the perception, the perception is, is a big deal. I mean, we had, we had the, the, the free, the free kindergarten, which was such a no-brainer. And I got, I heard so much from that after that meeting, like, how are you doing this? You know, like what, but the people outside of this room, a lot of them don't understand it and, and how it's such a win-win for everybody. And I guess my question is, but when do you need an answer on this? Like, can I wait till after, you know, would we do the overrides and see where we stand after that?
Not, not if I've got a schedule and get, get things in place and things like that, no. I, I mean, yeah, but now I'm running into a situation where we're not going to be able to do some of the things we have to do to get, to get the programs going. We got to file forms at the MIAA, we've got to get approval for that. That's got to be done. I, I think it's technically, is it four months before the start of the season? Those forms have to be filed through District D, so we're, we're kind of, we were kind of crunching the timeframe, bringing it this late, so.
Can it wait maybe another meeting or two?
Is that going to accomplish what we need to accomplish?
I'd like to talk to people about it.
Yeah, I mean, it could, but I, I think if you, I think if we wait for another, you talking another month?
At most.
I'm pushing it a little bit with time, but, I mean, I, if, if, if that's what's going to happen, it's going to happen, but I'm pushing time.
If it goes to a vote right now, I'd probably abstain. You know, I, 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 I like the idea, I was excited, but, but Dr. Sylvia's got me thinking.
Dr. Sylvia's got him thinking.
You all set, Mike?
Yeah.
Rhonda, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I think the only question that I have is, do you know when it's going to go to the Carver School Committee? And you'll, because you'll probably need that because you're going to have to file joint, joint forms, correct?
I'm guessing, but I don't think that that's a pro, I think the Carver School Committee is going to slam dunk it because Mike, when he proposed it to me, well, when we proposed it together, I said that we were going to meet with the school committee, and he said, "Call me immediately right after if the school committee approves it, and I'll get my end taken care of." So he'll have it taken care of, you know, Monday.
I don't think it's as much of an issue on their end for many reasons, but mainly they spent a lot of money on that cooperative hockey team, because I did meet with Mike when he came into Wareham High School, and they have that money earmarked already, so it's really a no-brainer for him, and he said it will not be an issue with his school committee, and I said, "Well, it will be an issue of mine, we need to go through the process." I said, "We're going to be cutting teachers," and, you know, I said, "It has to be, it has to be a positive flow of cash for that one year for them to approve that, because they're not going to approve it if it's costing us four thousand dollars." I said, "If you show that we're bringing in four thousand dollars, we have a chance," and...
And I think what most likely will happen is if it's not approved, then we're going to lose out in wrestling and in the four thousand dollars and probably have hockey, and they're going to struggle, they're going to struggle with numbers. If, if we can field the team, but, I mean, I, I, you know, I'm not positive, I don't know. It depends on who comes in.
Cliff?
Let me just lay out an, let me, let me lay out a scenario, okay? And then I'd like to make a motion. Can I do that? Can I have him answer my scenario first?
Well, I had some questions too, but...
Well, you're going for discussion.
Yes, I can.
Give me a second, all right. Here's the scenario. We vote, we vote to go ahead with this tonight. And Carver votes to go ahead with it. So everybody, everybody's happy, hunky-dory, these twelve kids are happy and everybody's happy. The budgetary reality hits us in August, and we've got to come up with, you know, umpteen dollars, whatever. And one of the strategies that we want to use is, we just can't afford to have hockey anymore. That'll be one of the strategies that we use to dump hockey. Could that be done even though we were a co-op? Couldn't we still do that?
I'm not sure. I'm, I can find out.
I mean, what would stop us from doing it? It's still our hockey program.
I think you could, yeah, but I'm not sure.
It's our program, we can do whatever we want.
So if worse came to worse, we could still dump hockey if we wanted to, even though we're a co-op?
I would think so, but I'm not positive, yeah. I could make a phone call, find out.
We're in charge of hockey.
Since it's our, yeah.
They're in charge of wrestling, just like they could do the same to wrestling.
Yeah, because we'd be the whole school in hockey, so...
Go ahead.
And again, that twelve number, I'm going to get back to you exactly with the number, but it, I mean, it's thereabouts. It might be a little higher, it might be a little lower, I don't know.
Did you say the hockey budget is approximately twenty-four thousand?
For us, I think we spent about twenty, twenty-two, but we cut a lot of ice time out.
This is twenty-four on the proposal.
Twenty-four is a proposal hockey budget to run our high school hockey program. We ran it with about twenty-two because we cut all our Sunday ice times out. So in other words, our athletes skated less than most other schools did.
Which number is in the FY13 budget?
Twenty-four.
Okay. If we take that twenty-four thousand, and let's assume optimistically that you get, I don't know, fourteen kids, okay? And they, and none of them are waivers. Now, that's a crazy assumption because half of our kids are on waivers. So maybe we shouldn't use a crazy assumption. Let's assume that four of our kids are on waivers, so let's just subtract a hundred, a thousand dollars from that. So we're now, we're now down to thirteen thousand, twenty-three thousand, okay? We'll take that twenty-three thousand and we'll divide it by the fourteen kids, okay? That is sixteen hundred and forty-two dollars per participant. You just gave us numbers today for spring sport that averaged about two hundred and ten dollars per participant. In other words, ice hockey would cost eight times what the average spring sport is costing. I personally find that in this environment, in which we are forced to, to operate, where we're laying off teachers and all the rest of the things that we know about, and I don't need to list, I first, I frankly find it unconscionable. I was under the impression that these two proposals were not in fact linked, that we could do the wrestling, or we could do the hockey, or we could do both. Are you telling me that in fact they are linked?
I think they're linked by our design. I think there's an opportunity for them not to be linked, if that's what you're asking. I think it was, they had a need with, they didn't have a place for their kids to play. Mark felt there was a need for a winter sport, and he felt wrestling was a good venue, so we somewhat had a need, and so that's, I think, how the conversation began.
That's exactly how...
But it's not, they're not married, if that's what you're asking.
Good, because this committee member thinks that the citizens of this town expect shared sacrifice, and we're asking them to sacrifice with these overrides and debt exclusions, and they, part of the shared sacrifice, for example, is they say, "Well, if we, if we come up with these extra monies for taxes, then maybe we ought to have some fees for bus drivers, not bus drivers, for getting kids to school." Any number of sacrifices are possible. So for us to add a program and keep another program going that is costing eight times the average for our spring sports, I can't frankly sit here and defend. On the other hand, I think if we went to them and said, "We had a great sport, but we, in this environment, we couldn't justify keeping it, but we came up with another sport so that kids had a great sport to play in the wintertime, and not only did we come up with that, we came up with it in a way that was better than cost neutral," they would say, "That's really creative, out-of-the-box thinking, and I applaud you for it." So this committee member thinks your wrestling idea is a great one, and I admire the fact that you came up with it, but this committee member couldn't possibly support sixteen hundred dollars per participant for a hockey program, just couldn't do it.
Even if there's twenty hockey players, the way you're, the way you are dividing the cost per kid, even if there's thirty kids, it's not, doesn't make sense.
If I can just make two comments.
I'm not saying that negatively, like, it's an expensive sport.
Philosophically, I don't think a kid should be penalized because their sport is expensive, but being the man that handed out six pink slips, I, I, I understand what we're talking about here.
I know, I get it too, I hate the idea of dropping hockey, but I...
In girls' tennis, we don't allow the use of the word "fair," because they all recognize life isn't fair, okay?
I mean, I get what you're saying, I, I, but just, it's not what I thought.
The other piece, if I can, is I was told by one of the candidates that applied for the coaching job that we recently had for hockey, that twelve kids from the middle school are going to be playing next year, but out of the twelve, nine of them have applied for Upper Cape. And, you know, again, as I, as I mentioned before, I'm in a position where there's no other school in the district that has a competition that I have to try and keep kids in the building. Again, I prefaced earlier, I don't think a kid should be penalized for hockey, but I think if we can, and again, maybe in August, we're sitting here saying, "We've got to cut so many dollars from the athletic program, maybe this is a mute point," but I really think that based on the numbers that we've been given through the Gateway Youth Hockey, we are in a one-to-two-year lull in hockey, and I totally get cost per pupil for cost per athlete in this case. The number is going to be more palatable for the school committee members' cost per athlete as we move forward. My concern, no matter what it is, whether it's a teaching position or an athletic program, is once you cut it, we all know it's gone. And so there needs to be a balance, and I agree with, you know, Dr. Sylvia, that we're making cuts, and it's not fun.
I don't, unfortunately, with total respect, as you know, I just don't accept your characterization of it being punished. There are kids who would love to play lacrosse. Are we punishing them by not having a lacrosse program?
These kids play, though, right now, like, they're, you're talking a sophomore coming back to play what they love.
I understand, but there are all sorts of things we'd like to do, could do. Changes have to be made, including laying off half a dozen, seven teachers, et cetera. So I don't want to belabor this point. I'm just saying tough choices have to be made, and I think the community expects them to be made, and if we make them, we're more likely to get support for the things that matter even more, which is getting some teachers back on the payroll. Dr. Rubinovich?
I believe we have transitioned from a discussion in whether to accept a cooperative athletic team to a discussion of cutting a sports team, which is not on the agenda, and I believe is a violation of open meeting law.
No, no.
I disagree.
I disagree too, we're not discussing that.
We are discussing a cooperative program which was on the, which was on the agenda, but, did you say you agreed?
I do, we're talking about, we're talking about, what came in front of us was a discussion on whether to form a collaborative program with, with Carver, and it has morphed into whether we need to cut hockey out altogether.
No, no.
Is what it seems like where it was going, so...
I disagree, but I do think we've gone...
Absolutely disagree.
I disagree too.
Going on and on. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would.
Go ahead.
Before I make the motion, I'll make one point, though, and this is very, very important. I'm not a hockey fan. I don't even like hockey, all right? But you know what? We've been committed to hockey all this time. So this isn't, my comments weren't about, "I want to cut hockey." My comments were that you have to look, just like you look at your class size. You can't run a class with three kids in it. Well, you can't run a hockey program with twelve kids in it, okay? That's all I was saying. And I was saying that once we go into a co-op program, if the numbers still do not justify the hockey program, then we may have to look at cutting. That's all I said. I didn't say, "I want to cut it, I don't, I don't care," because we've been committed to hockey all this time. So therefore, because we have been committed to hockey all this time, there is money in the thirteen budget for hockey right now, okay? That I will move to approve this request as presented.
Could you define this request?
Carver, the request to enter into a co-op proposal with Carver for hockey and wrestling.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay. We now have a motion on the table for discussion.
The question that I have is, when you had conversations with them about taking on the cost of wrestling while we continue to take on the cost of, of hockey, was there ever discussion, because maybe Carver's more flush than we are, that they might take on some of the expense of the hockey team as well? It's, it's a win for them, but then it's also a win for us because we're in a tough budget cycle, and that would they be willing? I know that it would be an increase in their budget, but would they consider taking on a portion of the costs of, of the hockey program?
Well, I could certainly propose it, but the thought process was that hockey's already in our budget for next year, and wrestling's already in their budget for next year. So we tried to be creative to try to find ways to add wrestling. Hockey's already there, and it was our thought, and so we tried to find ways to be creative to add wrestling or another program into Wareham and funding with it.
Right, but if the Carver School Committee read any Wareham papers, and they would also, and us reading theirs, and they would understand Carver doesn't have the same kind of financial concerns that we do, and so they'll be cutting because of participation. We are looking at cuts across the board because of the amount that we have to cut out of our budget this year. And so that's the only reason why to ask the question, because again, they're not cutting because of budget.
Did you have a number in mind that you'd be looking for?
Half.
For them to come up with twelve thousand?
Right.
Never happened, I bet.
Okay. Hey, I'm always on negotiation side, so I'll always go high. So if you want to come back and say six or whatever...
I just think that they, they lost their co-op with Sacred Heart. I would just think that they would say, "It's not in our budget."
And Sacred Heart picked up the total cost of the hockey program for them?
I don't know how it worked.
So the thing is, is there money there?
It was a per athlete fee.
I could certainly look into it.
Right, if they did have a budget for hockey, and that money is still on the table there and still budgeted, then it doesn't...
I think if you gave us, and again, however this works, if you gave Mark a proposal that it would be accepted if Carver came through with this amount of money, I think if, if the athletic director, who again I met with, had the confidence that it would be approved if Carver came up with this amount of money, and I don't know procedurally if that's even okay, but, but they, if they had that approval pending twelve thousand dollars, I think they could make it, I know they could make it happen, and I, so if that's something that you, that we can do procedurally...
Mr. Chair, that wasn't my motion, though. My motion was just to accept this as it was presented, okay? Now we're getting into negotiations, we're getting into how much money, we're getting into, "Let's make a deal." That's not what we're here for. We're here to say, "We're going to do this or not do this." If the votes no, then it's not, we're not doing it. If the votes yes, then we are doing it. And then it's going to be up to our administrators to work out the best deal.
And I will, I will certainly go and address, I mean, I'll, I'll call them tomorrow and see if we can, see if we can find a way to buffer some of the hockey costs, so. Get, get, you're right, there might be some money that they've put aside because they were co-opping with Sacred Heart, right? With Sacred Heart, that maybe there is some money there that they would...
Because for more ice, if we could scrap this at any time.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Speaking to previous speaker. The only reason why I think that it's an important, I'm not into negotiation, I'm not, but right now we have a proposal in front of us that includes, that includes costs. So mine would be amendment to the, the motion, I don't know the procedural, and you'll figure that out, but mine would be, the amendment would actually be estimated cost per sport, hockey twelve thousand, wrestling eleven thousand, whatever. We would, it's not me trying to negotiate, it's basically what I think that I could approve is a lower cost, basically a cost savings to go into a cooperative program. So instead of just making four thousand dollars, we're actually making sixteen thousand dollars in this, because I see it as an opportunity for us to be able to, to help out our program, and to help out our sports and help out our system, so...
We have a motion on the table, I did not hear an amendment, any other discussion?
Am I allowed to make amendment?
Are you allowed to make an amendment? Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to approve the proposal with the following changes. Estimated cost per sport, hockey twelve thousand, wrestling eleven thousand.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take, we'll take a vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Abstain.
You abstain, okay. So the amendment passes two, one, zero. Excuse me, two, one, one, two, one, one. It is now the main motion. Any further discussion? Okay?
I have a further discussion, if I, if I could. No?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
I'll abstain.
Two, zero, two. Two, zero, two, does not, is, that passes. Parliamentarian, yes, that passes, correct?
Yeah.
Two, zero, two. Two, zero, two, so...
I'm just trying to keep up with typing.
Yeah, I understand. Mark, did you have a comment you want to make?
Yeah, so I, I am going to go back and propose to Carver that we, if we do the two co-op programs, they have to put four thousand dollars towards wrestling, well, in a sense, because we're going to keep, instead of splitting users' fees, we'll keep all these fees. They're going to let us borrow a mat for ten thousand, which was worth about ten thousand, and they have to come up with twelve thousand dollars to buffer some of the costs for hockey.
I think that's an accurate assessment of the motion that just passed.
You have two weeks to be able to come back if all of a sudden the negotiations don't work out in your favor and come before us with another motion.
I'm sure Mark will get this done.
Are we, uh...
And if they say no, that's it? Will we come back?
We'll come back.
You'll have to come back, we're not going to give you...
What happens if Wareham splits and becomes non, doesn't, doesn't have the co-op with Carver in two years?
You'll be back to us, won't you?
That... Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, if it doesn't work out, would we have an opportunity to just vote on the wrestling only?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping for.
Well, I think that, I'm sorry, may I speak?
Yes.
So, Mark, and to my committee member, this is, I think that, from my perspective, I want this to work, I do. But there is an opportunity that maybe we're not taking advantage where they do, they're able to help a little bit more, that's all this is. That doesn't mean that you can't come back after talking with them and come back with the exact same proposal that you have in front of you, or something different that we can vote on again. It's just asking for a little bit more of...
Asking for half, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a lot to ask, but...
I do too.
Half. Asking them to pay half of our...
That's where, I think that that's where, all of a sudden, that's where the negotiation starts. So you're coming back and you're saying that now instead of twenty-four and eleven, it's, you know, but at least we've gotten...
We can try, it's worth a try.
We went into this thing in good faith, and we're not showing good faith right now.
Who's "we"?
The board. These people went into this with good faith, and we just pulled the rug out from under them.
I don't agree.
I know you don't agree, but that's a fact.
I don't think we were a party to it, but let's not dwell on this. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And Mark, I meant it when I said I appreciate the initiative and the creativity, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a minor change to the school calendar.
Yes, I'm asking that we amend the school calendar for 2012, 2013. The one amendment happens in November for Veterans Day. Veterans Day comes on Sunday, the eleventh. I have found that two of our contracts include Veterans Day as a paid holiday. So if we have work on Monday, then I would have to pay the custodians and the secretaries, it would cost us about fifteen thousand dollars. By having a no-school day that day and giving them the day off, then we save ourselves fifteen thousand dollars. Also, the veterans' agent came by the office and said that they were planning their activities on the Monday. Now, Veterans Day, we always thought was the one holiday that you celebrate on the day of, the eleventh, and that's when we put this together. But the state has recommended things be done on the Monday because of the Sunday holiday, and therefore that's why the veteran agent has gone in that direction. So that's why the reason for the amendment, to give one additional day off, and we would have one more day in June to go.
Okay, I'll take a motion to that effect, and we can discuss it as part of that.
I'll move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
Can we add eastern?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Cliff, did you?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I just have a point of information.
Four, zero, zero. Yes.
For the, the school calendar, Dr. Rubinovich?
For the, the school calendar, Dr. Ovinnovich, what is the difference between an early release day and a half day?
Early release and a half, and a half day?
Yeah, there's, there's two things on the school calendar. One says an early release, and then the Wednesday or something before Thanksgiving is just a half day.
Okay, the, um, day before Thanksgiving is an early release that does not involve lunch for students. And all the other early release days are for professional development, and they happen after lunch is served.
So the half day is gonna be much earlier than?
That is correct. At an elementary school, I believe it's like eleven, about eleven o'clock.
That happened this past year?
Yes, it's happened every year. In fact, all of our early release days used to be without lunch, but we, about two years ago, changed it to serve lunch on every one except for the day before Thanksgiving. Part of that is you have staff that travel and try to get out of town to family and relatives.
Great, thank you.
Um, school committee meeting dates. Dr. Ovinnovich, do you have that list? Because I didn't get it in my packet.
You didn't, I did.
I did.
Why could I not find it? What was it called?
Meeting dates.
How creative.
So, um, hopefully in your package you have a draft that says meeting dates. Um, there are two dates in July, two in August, actually two in every month except for, um.
February.
February.
And April.
Because of the two vacations.
Right. Has everybody had a chance to look at it? Question?
I have a question on one of the, is one of the July dates the eighteenth?
No.
Good. Go, go on.
I'm glad this meets with your approval.
We have three other live programs on that date, so.
Okay, um, so, every month, starting in July, twice a month, with the exception of February and April.
And three in January.
Yes, and the usual three in January because of the budget presentations, public hearing, and vote.
Mr. Chair, when would you like to know if a member would not be able to meet, be at one of the dates, just beforehand? Okay, it's just vacation schedules during the summertime and.
Obviously, it's great if a member can make every one, but it's, it's not expected. It's a lot of meetings.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, like, if there is a certain meeting date that you know that more than three members are not gonna be able, that, that's what I mean, just to make sure that you have a quorum for each one of the dates that are listed there right now.
I have not been informed that anybody's gonna miss any date, so I have no concern about a quorum as I sit here today.
Mike? Well, I just got this on my, on the desk when I showed up. It's from the mask.
Right.
And it mentions something between November seventh and tenth for me and my colleagues. Is that something we wanted to, I haven't even read it yet, just the, the date rang a bell.
That's their annual work meeting.
And I see that November seventh is on the.
But that, those are all during the day, I believe.
During the day.
All right, I just happened to see it.
And I suspect that November seventh is just an evening, um, dinner, keynote dinner, and it probably won't have any of the conference portion of it on Wednesday. So I don't think it'll actually be a conflict, but that's, of course, up to people to decide if they want to go to that keynote dinner. In other words, you wouldn't miss any of the actual programs, you'd just miss a dinner if you decided, if we decided to meet on that date. Any other questions?
Uh, yes. Didn't we, a few meetings ago, and I'm gonna regret saying this, bringing it up, but didn't we agree to do three meetings a month?
No.
Oh, good.
We definitely did not.
I know.
Okay, I thought we did.
That was priceless, Cliff.
And yours truly wouldn't expect to have my throat intact if we had. Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve these. Now, before I, it just occurred to me, you had a conflict.
Yes, but it's, I was gonna do it under new, but it, it's June twentieth, which is before this, right?
So we can vote on this? Yes, fine, good. Yes.
I, I can't speak for the summer. I mean, if I'm here, I'm here, if I'm not, I'm not.
I understand. I understand. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve these dates as printed.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero. Now, Dr. Ovinnovich.
Under any other business?
Under any other business, yes.
Um, I have found that I have a conflict for June twentieth. It is a family commitment. My daughter is renewing her vows, and for whatever reason, the third Wednesday didn't ring loudly to me that it was a school committee meeting, so I cannot attend. Um, and so what I'm asking is if we can move the meeting of June twentieth to June twenty-seventh.
It's fine with the chairman. Any, I'll take a motion to that effect if it's okay with the rest of the members.
Wait a minute. That's okay.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four, zero, zero.
Thank you for the family piece.
Just a point of information, when is that curriculum meeting?
Oh, the twelfth at four forty-five.
I will not be able to be there.
Then I will be happy to take your place, if that's all right?
Yeah, it's fine.
Unless she wants to look to change it up.
I didn't know anything about it anyways, that's okay.
I didn't either, but that's, do you wanna, you wanna try and work it out to move it?
No, no, I just won't be there.
You know, we also have, um, um, policy review that evening at five thirty, so that I try to.
That's on my calendar.
Yeah, all right.
So it's the time that's the problem?
Correct.
Okay, you sure you don't wanna try and reschedule it?
Nope.
Okay. Um, the only other thing I'd like to draw people's attention to is the mask, mask joint conference, November seventh through tenth, as usual, is gonna be at the Resort Conference Center in Hyannis. The dates are November seventh through tenth, as Mike pointed out. If we register before July fifteenth, we, we get a discount. So if you could let Michelle know before July fifteenth, if you're gonna be able to make that meeting, that would be beneficial financially to the district.
And that's what date?
Uh, November seventh through tenth.
That's the regular conference.
The regular conference, regular place, et cetera. Michelle, you can put me down as a participant.
Me too.
And as.
Me too.
I believe the only, and, and just the two lunches and skip the dinners. Would you like me to fill this out and give it to you? Would that be better?
Yes, please.
Fine, okay. Yes, let's do that as a courtesy to Michelle. Is there any other business that we'd like to, that we need to talk about? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
We're adjourned.